Please know that the meeting's being broadcast live and digitally recorded. And we'll start what we always do, which is with open sessions. Anybody here for open session? Joyce?
Hi.
Hi.
I was hoping to get you before the meeting, but...
I'm sorry.
I'm here to announce my retirement.
You can't do that.
It's not on April 12th either.
Effective June 30th.
No!
Yes.
Well...
Do we have to accept that?
I don't know.
Ryan already refused.
Well, I mean...
Is that your one word answer?
Wow.
No.
Well, I don't think we have enough time for words right now, but I mean, that's, that's wonderful for you that you're at a point where you're gonna be doing this, and I know you guys have a life project going on at the farm.
Yeah.
Which will keep you busy.
Hey.
We are currently about to pour accolades on Joyce because she just announced her retirement.
Oh.
And I said no. But anyway, so more to come from us, but thank you for all your service.
Okay.
Yeah. How many years has it been, Joyce?
Thirteen.
Nice.
Wow.
You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you.
Got it?
That's it.
You're a winner.
Congratulations.
I'm...
Sorry.
So she can be more involved with the Lions Club.
Right.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
While we're open session, I just want to introduce Bob Crompton here in the back in the Red Sox hat. So he was our most qualified candidate, very lucky to have him for our new driver laborer down at the DPW. Started today, said it went pretty well, and we're happy to have him, comes with a ton of experience. Just really killed the interview process and showed some dedication to the position, and we're looking forward to having him. Just wanted to show his face, people are gonna see him around town.
All right.
Welcome.
Welcome to coming.
Thank you.
And well played by waiting until April, so you missed the winter months as well.
It actually would've, my last job, I had no overtime in the winter time, so I got bummed out by that.
All right.
Well, next year.
Next year.
No, thank you.
I appreciate you coming, just wanted to introduce you to the board.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
While we do this, uh, while we do this, Lori, you wanna send us through the announcements?
Yep, so announcements.
Five, start a note on this five.
Five spots.
Keep other pages?
Oh, oh, oh. I'm gonna say, yeah, there's five.
Okay, Easter egg hunt, it's at the rec field Saturday, April 13th at 11:00 a.m. with rain date of the 14th. It's all different age groups, they divide it up into different fields, so they put the young kids on one, the old kids on the other. So nobody topples, it's great, free candy for kids, and the Easter bunny. So then, keep Hubbardson beautiful, townwide cleanup, it's on April 20th from 8:00 to 12:00. You can sign up, you can contact Laura Foley, I shared her email address today. So if you have any questions, you can contact her, that's going along with recycling for the Boy Scouts and bottling can drive for the Girl Scouts, so it's all gonna be one big extravaganza.
And when somebody asks me, and I think I know the answer, but you use your own bags?
Last year, I believe they had bags.
They had bags?
I believe last year they had bags. But I will, I can find out, but I believe they had them.
Thank you.
Um, Country Hen Scholarship is so open, I actually did receive one to date, so we're doing better, I think, about this time than last year.
Yeah.
So April 30th deadline to apply, it's a thousand dollar scholarship, you know, it's extra a thousand dollars.
Unless, let me just jump in there, unless, what we've done in the past is it's been Jeff and I who have been the board representatives, along with some people from the Country Hen who have been sort of the evaluation team. I'll keep it the same way unless anybody has any objections to that.
No, that's fine.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay. Mobility friendly trail opening, it's at Underwood Conservation Area, May 3rd at 5:00 p.m. It's an opening for, you know, anybody with maybe a disability or having walking trouble, so that will be opened, again, May 3rd. And then the 22nd Annual Library, it's a 5K road race and walk, that's not until September, but I did run it by Chief Perrin, he had no issues as it's a 22nd one, so there were no concerns. Also, the Lions Club, seeing there are Lions in the house, I see them at 7:00 p.m. on Friday, there'll be a meat raffle. So that will be at the Hubbardson Rod and Gun Club.
Last one of the year, right?
Yes.
That's all?
Gets a little tricky when it gets warm out, and you got all the meat out in there. I've been there. Okay, thanks. Excuse me, thanks Lori. All right, so new business, looks like you guys are right up A and B, there's Hubbardson Lions Club town sign and Hubbardson Lions Club toll booth. One up.
So for a service project for the town, we're looking into, we set up a committee to go through and see what we could find for a community sign. Cause we do get a lot of comments, well geez, we didn't know this event was coming up or that event was coming up.
I'll come up right now, sorry.
Okay. So we got some pictures coming up.
We're looking at them too.
All right, so we looked at both Boilston and Northborough. And they're actually two different types of signs. Boilston is the older technology, the same as what Holden has for the Fire Department and what Holden has by the State Police barracks. Northborough is the new technology. So there's quite a price difference between the old technology and the new technology. Now, the difference is, the new technology looks like a picture. The old technology is more words. They both load the same, so you can do both from a laptop, you can adjust, adjust how bright it is. If there are concerns at night that nobody wants to see the light after a certain time, they can be shut off automatically. So they can be on a timer so that they're not distracting. And what we were thinking for a location is basically replacing what is there now on Clark Corner. Word did get out to Katie, so she's very excited about this.
Is there power?
There is power there, it doesn't go to the sign yet, but there's already underground conduit. So the club is gonna come up with a proposal on what they think would fit in the town. I can give you just a quick sketch, if you guys wanna pass that around. Something that we thought might fit in with town, we could do field stone or a brick base, have some uprights and a little roof, so it wouldn't change too much from what's there. I did, I did talk with... I did talk with Parks and Recreation because that's, they cover that area, and they... So far, obviously, they haven't seen our final, how we're gonna design it and that type, but they're on board with it. Everybody I talked to, I haven't had anybody say they did not want it. So I figured I would come here and get your take on it, or if you have any questions.
Yeah, I think it's great, I mean, absolutely fantastic. I guess, it may be a little early for this conversation, but I guess the question will come up, who controls the message?
Okay, well, what we did is we looked at Northborough, and Northborough, the Lions control it. So I checked with the police chief, and he is more than happy to hand that off.
Cause they're supposed to have some jurisdiction over the flashing signboard.
Yes, yeah. What we were thinking is just like Northborough does, it's all community events. So whether it's Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, the seniors, you know, if there's obviously like a town meeting, an election, something like that would go up there.
Okay.
Then they also have, police and fire would have access for emergencies. So if there was something where a road was closed, something like that, that could be entered into it. Everything else would go through, well, what Northborough has is it goes through the club and the club puts it up. They have four members that are on the committee. Everybody gets it for a week, so they have to enter what goes in for that week. And they, they require everyone to put the material to them two weeks prior to when they want it up. So that gives everybody a little bit of time, it can be loaded from a laptop. Depending how it works, it either has to be line of sight, or if there is a connection up there for cable or internet, then it could be done at home. So that depends, I don't know what's in the fire station right now. That's where it gets the power, where the power comes from.
Okay. As far as help from the town, would you need any help from the town in any way?
Right now, the only thing I can see is the electricity, we have a couple of electricians that'll volunteer their time to hook it up.
And there's no like big excavation requirement necessarily, right?
No, no.
I mean, I think you could probably figure that out yourself.
We have ways of getting that done.
Yeah.
But depending what's gonna be required, there might be a small footing that has to go under that.
Okay.
Depending what we're gonna do, if we're gonna leave it on posts, or if we wanted to do a brick or a stone base.
That is great, Tom.
Yeah, I mean, anyone have any other questions for Tom on this?
What's, what's the cost difference between the little one and the bigger one?
Well, the old technology, which would be the first one, that runs about three thousand dollars for a two-sided. The new technology goes ten thousand dollars for two sides.
Wow.
So the size that we think would fit well would be three by six. The reason we picked three by six, the older technology, you can pick whatever size you want. The new technology, three by six is a standard size.
Okay.
So if you, if you wanna go outside a standard size, then obviously the price goes up. But they make three by six or four by eight, we thought four by eight would be too big. You know, three by six, what's up there now is four by four.
Okay.
And they recommend a longer line, so you can read it easier than a shorter line and more rows.
Okay, well, obviously you didn't hear any objections from here, I wouldn't, it would be, when you get a final design, love to see it.
Okay.
Okay. And then, you know, obviously trust you with the decisions, but just be interested to see.
Okay, and Ryan's working with the building inspector to see exactly how that can work.
Yeah, so we just sent it to see if there's any major objections to the building department, obviously can't give a preapproval without a design, but no major objections, couple questions about internal lighting, et cetera, but nothing that, nothing that jumps out as something that would be preventative. This also ties very nicely into, if you remember Todd Miller, Economic Development Coordinator, came and talked about adding a electronic sign as something that could be an immediate impact for economic development, and of course, we watch as volunteers come in, mostly Katie, to be candid, and have to do the hand signs in January and just feel guilty, cause it's just, it's literally painful to change the sign, but so many dedicated volunteers willing to do it, so this would help that as well.
And I just have to bring it up, just so it doesn't like get to a point where it hadn't been brought up, but we do have bylaws
Yeah.
specific to signage in town, so I don't know if Tom, I put you on the spot here, but it's, you know, there's specific conditions that have to do with those things, and that's available on the website, or if you need help getting that, to take a look at it, just let us know.
Yeah, that's why I believe the building inspector, I did mention it.
As the building inspectors, that's the right path to start.
Yeah, okay.
I think this is great, this is a huge, huge thing for the community.
Good, good, well, we will continue on our path with that.
Okay, and next?
Next we have the toll booth, we'd like to do that again this year. I did talk to the police chief, and he said he was okay, there were no incidents last year, and as far as he was concerned, we could do it again.
Okay, great, yeah, sounds like it was a success without a doubt, and it's well worth it. I guess one question I do have is, and I don't remember what you did last year, did you have a rain date? Like, were you not gonna do it if it rained?
We did not have a rain date, but we could, we could do one, I think we figured if it rained...
People aren't gonna wanna open their windows as much, right, and all that?
Yeah.
Probably a little less safe, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What's the date you're looking at?
Right now, it's, we haven't picked an exact date, but I believe it's beginning of July. So we catch the, catch the summer traffic.
Sounds good, I guess check all your boxes and good luck.
Okay.
Should we make a motion to approve that?
We have to waive the, the current policy against...
All right, so I'll make a motion to waive the current toll booth policy in favor of the Hubbardson Lions Club. For one day, for one day event.
Plus, right, okay.
I'm gonna stay from the Lions.
Oh, okay.
I'll second it.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
I'm staying, all right. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you very much, just so you know, the amount of money we raised last year at the toll booth was more than enough to send one student with diabetes to summer camp for a week, so...
Leave with that.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so we now have the Malone Road proposed conservation restriction, Ryan?
Yeah, we have Mark here, if you will, and Bob as well to speak on it.
Yeah, you guys wanna come up, or you wanna, come on up?
Hi, Mark, Mark Kreske, Templeton Road.
Okay.
This is an issue that came to light when I was researching the original purchase of the conservation, the Malone Road property. I just wanted to see how we had managed to cobble together the funds at that point, and...
Did you talk to anyone who was involved in that as well?
Sure, yeah, I talked to Jesse, yeah. But I was just going through the paperwork as well, and what, what came to light was that part of the funding for that purchase was through the Community Preservation Act. And the CPA requires a conservation restriction on any properties bought, bought with those funds, which was never actually done. And I know, I know it, it probably seems like, seems unnecessary, and a real belt and suspenders approach to land conservation since we, in the, in the original warrant article, we said that this land is for conservation. But it is a requirement of the, of the statute. And at this point, we're, we're in the process, or we're gonna, we're gonna start prospecting around for new grant opportunities. And we really need to be able to show that we got a dollar I's and crossed all our T's the last time we got a good grant.
That's it, I completely understood.
So I don't know if you had any questions on what a, what a restriction is, or
Sure.
what, what the process.
Uh, yeah, I mean, what is the process?
A restriction basically spells out what's gonna be an allowable use on the property. Your concept of conservation may not be the same as my concept of conservation, may not be the same as Ryan's. So it basically just lays it out, these things are allowed, these things are not allowed. And it's a legal agreement with a third party involved.
Okay.
Typically either a state agency or a land trust. And in the event that there's ever a problem in the future and unallowable activity is going on, then this other party has the responsibility to step in and say, no, you gotta adhere to the original agreement. So that's what we would be looking at putting together.
Was, was there a list of allowable uses originally when the article was written?
No. We do have a document like that on the Mount Jeff property, but there is not one for the Malone Road.
Okay.
In the property at the end of Malone Road.
That's probably what I recalled in the Mount Jeff one.
Yeah.
So I assume you would just mirror that, or is it
Something's up.
site conditions here that change?
Well, we'd, we'd make it a little more liberal in terms of trail use and ability to create new trails out there if we ever deem it a good idea.
No four wheels though, right?
No, no, no four wheels.
I think the, the other one had snowmobiles.
Snowmobiles. Snowmobiles.
Yeah, from that aspect, it'd be very similar.
Snowmobiles, horses.
And it's open to hunting?
Yeah. And, and basically, the ownership doesn't change, the town still owns the land. It's just that there's additional, an additional side agreement on what you can do, do on it.
Yeah.
So we did, we did some preliminary conversations, just checked around. I checked with the DCR, they would be willing to hold this agreement, we checked with North County Land Trust, they're also willing to hold it. At this point, we're, we're thinking of pursuing it with North County, and...
Is there a difference, is one is, is more advantageous than the other?
Not especially, I mean, the DCR does hold the one on Mount Jeff, so it would make a certain amount of sense to have the same party involved on both properties, but it doesn't really make a big difference. The way we were looking at it was that there could be other projects in town that we would be interested, interested in partnering with North County on, and so...
North County would add a little bit more of a local flavor versus a big organization that's
Already owns sixty percent of our town?
Yeah, something like that.
And North County is, is doing the one for the Underwood property too, so they're, they're interested. Because it's a more local organization, they're more interested in supporting towns, so...
Okay. All right, well, thanks for following through.
So, you know, at this point, we just wanted, you know, before we started driving forward, we wanted to, we, we, we talked to the Concom.
Yeah.
They would have to be involved, they've, they've given their blessing. Now we're looking for your agreement that this makes sense, and we don't, we don't wanna go down a route that nobody wants us to go down.
And it's just a blessing to go forward and generate the document. Concom will have a full review of the document to make sure that things are covered in there, that they'd like to have covered in, in anything. Like with the, the field, for example, it'd be nice that there's one large field up there, it'd be nice to be able to have town activities on that field to make sure that that was permitted and things like that, but then, and you'll see the final document before it goes further. So it's just, it's just asking that, that you think it's okay for us to go ahead and generate the document, and then if the Concom and yourselves will have a chance to review it.
Yeah, go for it, absolutely.
All right.
Any action?
Uh, nope, just that there's some costs involved nominally for recording fees for town council review if necessary. So just looking again for the board to, to give the preliminary go-ahead to incur those costs and engage the staff in that work.
Yeah, that's in the few hundred dollar category, and we have a, a small account, the open space has a small account, and we can cover that with our own accounts.
Recording fees, not the legal fees.
I was gonna say, we got one on right behind you.
Yeah, and that's your, that's your prerogative, prerogative, whether to get town council involved or not, it's not absolutely required.
Yep, well, we'll cross that bridge if we have to.
Okay.
Okay?
Very good.
Sounds good, thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, we've got the, the annual town meeting draft warrant review, the floor is yours.
Uh, so we do have councils here and a couple of parties for seven o'clock, I do think this will take a half hour or so, if...
Let's, let's pass over this item.
I can do appointments if you want.
Yeah, let's pass over, we'll, we can start to stay in order here and then get to the appointments, we've still got five minutes. Okay. Unless you don't think so, I mean, the next item, so we're gonna pass that item over for now, temporary service agreement for solar inspections?
So this is for 147 Williamsville Road, if you remember when we engaged in the regionalization with Gardner for building inspection, we exempted this project cause it was already in the works, so this would be, what would be required here is a significant amount of building inspection while the project's being built, in addition to electrical inspections, both of, a number of them, very significant, in a high level of cost. The permits are also a good revenue generator for us, so it, it works out in our favor in the end. I spoke with Mayor Hock and he's, he knows this is happening, it's, it's not a surprise to him. So we looked, we reached out to Rich Brady, who was doing our building inspection, to see if he would continue in a temporary capacity for a one-year temporary agreement to do the building inspection. So it'd be thirty dollars per inspection, and then a twenty-seven, twenty rate for any admin time. Probably looking at somewhere between, this is just a rough guess, but ten to fifteen thousand in fees generated from these building inspections. And then on the electrical side, to reengage, he's still our inspector through Gardner, but to, to reengage Darrell for this project. Again, I already spoke with Gardner, they know about this, and he would be continuing at his rate of seventy-five percent of fees collected. So if that sounds good to the board, then I would sign contracts on behalf of the board with those inspectors to make sure that project's getting ready to go. They've already pulled their building insper, permit, and as soon as, my understanding is as soon as the ground's ready, they're gonna start building it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the temporary services agreement for the solar field on Williamsville Road for Rich Brady and Darrell Sweeney.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, we have a MART transportation service contract.
So this is through MART, what MART has changed is they're asking for us to carry the insurance for the vehicles, but they reimburse us for it, but it's just easier for them to not manage those. So that's part of the contract, is us taking that over, which we've already talked to our insurance company, it's already added, but we needed the contract signed, that was the final piece for it to move over to our hands.
So when we take care of the, so is the, is the, is, has the insured changed? Meaning who is insured?
It goes under the town of Hubbardson is who is insured.
Right.
But we're insured the MART vehicle. But they're reimbursing us for it, so they used to pay for everything, now they're just asking that we carry it, and then they're reimbursed, so...
So on MART's side, it's easier for them, cause they're not holding insurance for all the towns they serve, so the towns would hold the insurance and they'd pay us for it.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the MART transportation service contract with the amendment for insurance.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. It's three years, right? Three-year contract?
Yes.
And then, the one other item I guess we can get to is to review the assessing RFP?
So the assess, this, this is in your packet, is, I'm handing it to for your review, to look over, it's a, it's a lengthier document, I wouldn't say it's extremely long. We've also sent it to the Board of Assessors to definitely get their recommendation and approval for this RFP. So we are at the end of a three-year contract with RRG, who's our assessing contractor, our regional contractor. We get from them a chief assessor, a assistant assessor, and then all the other assessing duties that come from them. So it is, under 30B, we do need to send this out again at the end of the contract, so we will be sending out this RFP to see who wants to bid for our assessing services. We'd be looking for your approval on it at the next meeting, after the assessors have weighed in and offered their changes and amendments.
Okay. So?
No action.
No action, right.
We got like a minute, you wanna do a quick wage authorization in your, in appointment?
Yeah. Oh, we'll go to item seven then, appointments?
So appointments, this is a resignation from Kenneth Green, he did not write it himself. I received an email from Martha Holgerson, who reached out to her, his daughter, and she had advised that he is in assisted living in North Carolina and will not be returning, and his house will be going up for sale. So he did, he was not able to put this in prior, but they have run it by the family. So they're looking, they have two alternates now, they're gonna move up one of the alternates into the permanent spot. I'll have that for you next time, they wanted to meet, their meeting this weekend, so they'll see who they wanna put in the permanent member spot in place of him.
So I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Kenneth Green from the Historical Commission.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes, yes.
And then the wage authorization, that is for the new DPW worker that you had met today, it would be effective today, as today was his first, this is day to hire.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, well, this is the waive the notification period for the hire of Bob Crompton as presented for the DPW.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
All right, well, we've hit seven thirty, head to item five.
Seven.
Seven.
I'm sorry, seven, sorry. Head to item five, which is, which is the grievance that we're gonna discuss, so you wanna come on up?
To set the stage for this, for the board, the board asked for additional information, we met in executive session last time in terms of the grievance filed by Officer Amen, level three grievance to you, the board, to, to understand. So we were able to, for you, bring Chief Perrin's here, is Sarn Kucher joining us? Sarn Kucher's here as well to answer any questions, and per the board's request, we also have town council here to oversee this, this hearing, so the board is able to move on from here in any way they want, in terms of, not any way you want, but you understand what I'm saying, in terms of information gathering, or what would allow you to... if, not any way you want, but you understand what I'm saying, in terms of information gathering or what would allow you to make a decision on this. Um, Officer Aiman did give us an extension to today in order to come to a decision on, uh, this grievance.
And Officer Aiman, you, you are, um, requesting that this be held in public session, not executive session, is that correct?
Um, okay, well, let me just do a little more setting of the table here. So, um, you know, we don't have too many of these, so we make sure we do our full-on research on the appropriate ways to conduct them. And I know you've had some conversations about certain things, do's and don'ts, that sort of thing. And I thought it important enough to have, uh, asked, uh, Carolyn Murray from, uh, uh, Copman and Page as town council here as well to just sort of guide us along a little bit or, or whip something at us, you know, if, if, if things, uh, go out of order, out of turn. But, um, I, I guess the, the main, um, item just to, to, uh, to discuss is that you're here, um, to, in whatever capacity you plan on presenting your grievance. Uh, however, um, maligning others that are either here or not here is not something that can be done in open session. And so therefore that, that conversation would end, or that portion of the conversation would end with the potential to go into executive session at some point. So, but I just wanna ma- make sure, you know, that's, that's known. But I mean, we're here for you, so, uh, you know, I'd like to give you the table here.
Okay. Uh, I did write everything down just so I wouldn't outstep my boundaries like I was advised, so I don't, I don't, I don't like to read off something, but I did write just to make sure I stay within my guidelines.
And can I, can I ask, can I ask if there any, if there's anybody else here on behalf of him, or is that not relevant? Is anyone here on behalf of you?
As far as, yes, there is some people here.
Okay. Okay. Alright, thanks.
So, um, first off, I would like to thank every, uh, the members of the board and everyone who has showed up and showed their support. I would like to start off by stating that no matter what the outcome tonight, I will continue to go above and beyond for this community and that I have grown, that I've grown to love. I'll continue to serve this town with the utmost respect, professionalism, and integrity. Um, due to an accident that I was involved in back in December, I've been suspended for the accident for letting a ride-along out of the cruiser and for not completing report until my next shift for a different incident that occurred, uh, with other residents of the town. Um, with that being said, I do wanna state that I've never been disciplined since I've been here and I've, uh, have a clean record of employment. Um, with all due respect, the allegation of, uh, failing to operate the cruiser is subjective. Uh, accidents occur, um, and not always, uh, caused by lack of care. Uh, I know of other accidents that have also occurred and suspensions were not the outcome. My speed in this case was not excessive and the witness in the cruiser also testified to this. Uh, it was merely just an accident. Um, to the second matter of insubordination, uh, on that same day, uh, allowing my ride-along out of the cruiser and being suspended for a total of five days for this. It was understood to, it was understood by me that my sixteen-year-old nephew, that is a juvenile, was not allowed to exit the cruiser. Had I understood that the direction was to not allow any ride-alongs out at all, I would have never allowed it once, let alone four times. Insubordination is defined as defiance of authority or refusal to obey orders intentionally. At no point in time would I or have I intentionally disobeyed orders as a police officer or while I was, uh, in the United States Marine Corps. My ride-along only exited the cruiser when I deemed it was safe for him to do so. The second incident, uh, for discipline was for not completing a report. I was advised to pull an incident number for a property exchange where a male party gathered belongings with the other party not present. Miscellaneous items were taken like furniture and clothes and dishes. This report was not done that evening due to an error where I could not send or upload photos and I advised of this and completed the report before the start of my next shift, which was two days after the fact. At no point, um, do I believe that the town was liable or susceptible to any allegations of wrongdoings. If there was any other type of record, uh, of report in regards to a warrant, uh, restraining orders or anything that I felt pertinent, like an arrest, it would have been completed. Um, this issue is a matter of a misunderstanding and again, not a matter of intentional failure to follow directive. Uh, as a member of this union and department going on, uh, six years, we'll start, yeah, end of April, I've never been disciplined verbally or in writing. Due to this, I believe that there was no progressive discipline due to it skipping the verbal and written portion altogether. Um, and with that being said, uh, again, I would like to thank everyone that, uh, was in attendance and, uh, for the support and it was overwhelming for everyone that reached out to me.
So, so what's your goal?
Uh, overall, based, based on the fact that, um, I've never been in any trouble here, uh, written or verbally. Uh, my goal is to essentially get this, uh, just, uh, write up, uh, in my file and, uh, leave it at that.
So for, for the offenses that you, um, uh, that resulted in the suspension?
Yes, sir.
Um, which I just generally wrote down as others allow, do others allow others to get out of the cruiser and do others not finish reports, as far as you know?
As far as I know, yes, it has happened in the past.
You guys got anything?
Um. Other than saying, I mean, this, this whole thing obviously puts us in an impossible position. Um, we have a lot of respect for you, we have a lot of respect for the chief and sergeant, and it's, uh, eh, it's tough to sit here and, and decide, you know, who said what, who did what, who, you know, whatever. So we'll do our best to kinda tease through some of the, the, the cases here. Um.
It is, as he said, he said he can get. And so that's just to sort of further that statement when you've got a board sitting here trying to process that fact. Cause that, in my mind, that's fact, is that one's party's saying one thing and one's saying the other. So it's, it's, it's just something that, um, takes some thought. So Ryan, um, the, the next action on this would, would fall to us, fall back to us. Cause basically what we've done, if I could set this correctly, is no decisions were made, uh, the last time we met about this. And the course of action that we asked to be taken was additional information gathering.
Yes.
So we're now at the next step, which is a part of the process, which was, uh, a grievance sort of hearing, not hearing per se, but us hearing the grievance, sort of in here. And so it would then just come back to us again to, um, to rule on, uh, the suspension in the same way we were going to last time, just with more information now, right?
So you're ruling on the validity of the grievance?
Validity of the grievance, okay.
And the information you asked for was, um, essentially as you stated, so previous discipline, um, and the reasonings behind, um, whether or not it matched previous discipline and, uh, which is why we have, uh, Chief Perrin and Sergeant Kucha here, um, so that they could answer that question for you.
That, that was my next sort of.
So I guess my, my question would, do, did they come up here? Is that?
It's, it's up to you. You guys wanna come up or you're good? Yeah, thank you.
Hi, gentlemen.
Hello.
Hello. Um, so one of the questions that came up in our executive session with this was, I, we do not have obviously a formal policy in place for ride-alongs. So could you guys, uh, as, as our, you know, commanding officers in this department, explain why we do ride-alongs, um, who gets to go on ride-alongs? And, uh, what are some of the, I guess, unofficial policies that you would hold for ride-alongs?
So ride-alongs are a communities, community service type of thing. Um, give people the opportunity to ride along in a vehicle, untrained people generally. We do have some people that have been to part-time academies, in part-time academies, in full-time academies. But it's generally to give the public a little perspective of police work. Um, and it was never the intent, since I've been chief, to allow these people out of the car because of liability to the town. Uh, one thing I wanna protect is the liability for the town. They do sign a waiver if there's an injury, if there's an accident, et cetera. Uh, we did have an incident in March of eighteen, uh, where a ride-along came out of the car during a medical, which was being allowed by the sergeants. However, the medical went south quickly and it turned into a little bit more than a medical. Uh, so it was after that that they told the sergeants that there won't be ride-alongs, aren't to leave the cars, uh, for a liability's sake. So kinda getting, going beyond that, in September, um, what was reported to me and, and Sergeant Kucha can certainly, uh, speak on his, his own behalf, uh, part of the report that you have is that he counseled Officer Aiman after, I believe after he saw a, a person out of the car. That, that's, that's not gonna tell everybody, we don't want people out of the car. We more, we wanna continue this program and allow people to do this, but we can't take on a liability for people out of the car. And that was, I believe, September eighteenth?
Yeah.
Uh, of two thousand nineteen. Two thousand eighteen, I'm sorry. And then, uh, December twenty-ninth is the, is the accident. So, um.
December twen- the seventh issue.
December twenty-ninth was the accident, was the accident.
Yes, the seventh issue.
And that accident, um, in, in attempt to see what happened, uh, brought Sergeant Kucha to, to look at the video, which showed that person out of the car, which prompted some of the charges. Further, uh, video showed more, um, and, you know, I mean, I could speak on everything that Officer Aiman spoke of. I, I also have a prepared thing about the importance of discipline for a police department. Um, I could tell you that.
Let's stick on this one for a second, a couple of follow-ups.
Sure.
But absolutely, kind of the floor in a little bit. But I guess, so you stated that, um, that, um, you, you let the sergeants know that after, you know, the medical situation, I'm, again, I'm gonna generalize, I'm not gonna pretend like I remember everything you just said. But you let the sergeants know, and I could just kinda go over to you, Sergeant. Um, was it then relayed from the sergeants to the rest of the force, whether, you know, full-time and part-time or all that?
The way that basically most of the ride-alongs have been done by Officer Aiman. Very few have been done by anybody else. Uh, Detective Chatty has had some ride-alongs. Um, other than that, I really don't know about other officers doing it. Um, so I really didn't put anything out as far as this isn't to happen, but when I, basically I inadvertently discovered it on, in September. And then that's when I called them in and said, this can't happen anymore. We can't let them out of the car at all. Because I know we didn't have a policy stating that, so, um, so that's when I had told them, but I hadn't put anything out, no.
So, okay, so this was a, again, this is part of the he said thing that we're dealing with here. Um, so, um, so that was September and then just to make sure I'm fully understanding it, December is when the accident and the video came out to in, indeed show that somebody was out of the car?
Yes, for the, the second time.
The second.
Cause I had noticed it in September on video, that's how I figured it out.
Okay.
The first time.
The, the first time, um, Officer Aiman basically told us, was it a relative of his that got out of the car?
Um, it probably, uh, but I would have to go back and, I would have to go back and actually look at the video and be like, who is this?
Yeah. But how he interpreted it to us was, um, it was a relative of his, pardon me if I'm wrong.
Minor relative.
Yeah, minor relative and, um, he was advised after that to not let him out of the vehicle, which he told us he interpreted that as, he, he assumed that meant his minor relative, not all ride-alongs. That's, I think, where a lot of this confusion is coming across.
For that, I have no question. I think that.
Yeah, I, I understand that and I, but to me, I was, I was clear that it was all ride-alongs.
Mm-hmm.
And I think getting involved in, in this whole, the whole policy thing, I think we're missing a point here because the charge isn't violation of that policy. The charge is insubordination related to the order given by Sergeant Kucha. So the criteria for that order is, was he, was it lawful? Did he have position to give the order? And the answer is, and it was moral. So the three, the three-pronged test for that order is yes, yes, yes.
For the sergeant.
For the sergeant's order to the patrolman. So, um, that, the patrolman's job is to follow the order.
And, and again, I understand that we're not police officers and don't understand it all, but there's certain points that we have to sort of act as well.
Sure, I, absolutely, yep.
And so my next follow-up to that would be, okay, is, is a verbal okay with that, sort of checking those three boxes?
If you read our, our, in fact, if you read our policy on, on insubordination.
Yeah.
Um.
You've been giving us a lot of policies recently, so that would probably.
Yeah, but we are going through them. But in, in that policy, an order is defined as a command or instruction, oral or written, given by one member of the department to another member of lesser rank. I'll paraphrase.
Sure, sure, sure.
It's essentially proper operation. Every officer department shall promptly obey without reservation the orders, rules, regulations, policy, procedures of the department. The intention of refusal to obey any direct lawful order is grounds for termination. So we didn't go to that level. We went to a day suspension for each one and the last one was a two-day suspension. Um, so the question came up of whether it's excessive and I certainly don't think so. I think it's.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't understand, but.
One sec.
Um, we can get into that.
Yeah, we will. You wanna say something?
Yeah, I just think that the biggest thing with that policy is where it states intentional. There was, there was no intent whatsoever. And if, like I stated, if, if, if I did know for sure that that's what he meant, not to do any ride-alongs, like I said, I, not only would I have not allowed it once, but I would never have allowed it four times.
Right, but then you get to a s- sort of a little bit of a, a legalese semantic discussion on what the definition of intentional is. Whether or not, cause you intentionally let them out, even, you know what I mean? Like it still can be, um, the words can still be messed around with a little bit. Okay, well, I.
Can I ask Carolyn a question real quick, Mr. Jones?
Yeah.
I, I don't know if this is something you can answer. Um, so in your dealings in the past with arbitration, with unions, with police department, obviously they're a paramilitary organization, they have command structure. Um, and obviously superior officers give a, an order and expect to be followed. But where does that, in the legal world, break down with policy? We don't have a written, eh, what I've come back to in our executive sessions is that we don't have a written policy for ride-alongs. I don't know what order was given, what was heard, I, what was given versus what was heard, I don't know. I'm not even ge- dive into that. I wasn't there, none of us were. But in an arbitration setting, um, where does a direct order versus the lack of policy for this come in? Cause this wasn't an order to break down the door and go in the house and go get this guy. This wasn't, this was more of a procedural thing, I guess I should say. So in a legal, in your legal opinion, where, have you seen this before and where does, where does that line get drawn?
Uh, be happy to address that, um, for the record, Carolyn Murray from KP Law. Um, there are a number of sources that if this were to go to arbitration or even if it were to go to civil service, there are a number of sources that an arbitrator or hearing officer would look to. Certainly with the police department, as you've laid out, it's a paramilitary organization, the chain of command, is very important. Policies and procedures, rules and regulations, all of that are part of it. And if there is a written policy, that certainly is given a great deal of weight. But to your point, we don't have a policy necessarily written about every single instance that a police department is going to encounter on any given day. So they'll look to other things as well, such as, okay, was there some sort of communication? What type of communication was that? I've seen arbitrators and hearing officers look, ask about things such as at roll call. Is there information or is there a policy, procedure, practice, whatever, that might be put into place or communicated to officers at roll call? Are there memos that are put out to froms, from, from the superior officers and with the chief to officers so that they know of a change of the rules of engagement that might be in place for a temporary period of time or, or a longer period of time based on a situation that they might be confronted with? Um, there might also be, you know, we live in a world of emails as well, so that, you know, they'll look to all sorts of different things. But one of the things that I will say that is, that is important to look at in your own rules and regulations, an order can be and is defined as verbal or written. So the fact that we don't have a written policy or we don't have a written order, that puts us somewhat of a disadvantage because we don't necessarily know what specifically was communicated. You're left with trying to flush out the truth based on the folks that are here before you. But you can give weight to a verbal order if you believe that a verbal order was in some sense communicated. And sometimes what, in these situations, what a hearing officer or an arbitrator would look to is, well, what were other people in the department made aware of? What was the general understanding in the office as well? I mean, for example, we, we don't have a policy that says, you know, don't engage in certain unlawful conduct. But we know that that is a standard that we do hold our police officers to. So that would be some information I think would be helpful to board in terms of, so there wasn't a written policy, there was something that was at least verbally communicated from the sergeant to the officer. Was there something that was more broadly communicated to other officers as well about ride-alongs? What we also look at usually in an arbitration setting is, what is the custom and practice within the department? You know, we might have a, 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 a contract that is silent about something or policies and procedures that are silent, but what is the? But what is the practice within the department? And based on what the practice is, and how the, the command staff responds to that, you learn what is acceptable and unacceptable behavior. So that would also be important to learn.
Clear it up for you?
It did, a little bit.
I mean, it does, it's, it's just, it's, and again, I, I just wanna say it out loud. It is not my favorite, our favorite thing to be questioning what you think appropriate, suspension would be on a case, right? But this is, this is just a necessary step. So, moving on a little bit, it's to the report, okay? So is additional, um, uh, uh, suspension due to the report not being filed? I guess, let us, let me know, or, or try to explain what, what the importance of filing that report would be to warrant that.
Can I give you a timeline?
Yes.
Uh, in regards to the two-day suspension for failure to complete a report Officer Aiman was ordered to complete before the end of his shift. His sergeant ordered Officer Aiman on one eleven nineteen, which was a Friday, that he was to do a property exchange on that Saturday with a couple that we have had many documentable issues with. He told Officer Aiman that once he completed the call, that he wanted the report completed possible before he left work that evening, which would have been one twelve. Officer Aiman was going on days off. He was off the thirteenth and fourteenth, so he wasn't gonna be back until Tuesday. And really, the reason we wanted that report is further contact with his family over the weekend. The officers that are coming on the shift. Officer Aiman wouldn't be back until Tuesday. We wanted them aware that this property exchange took place and any other further issues. We wanted to be able to add to that because these things always end up in some type of litigation. So he was told to do that, and that was not done.
And can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
Was that reasoning told to Officer Aiman? Meaning that, that was the reason why we wanted that, not that that's gonna justify it in your mind. I'm just asking, was that reason given?
I don't think I gave him a reason that, you know, just that it needed to be done.
Okay.
So, um, and what he said was true, that some reports we don't require, to save overtime or whatever if it's late in shift, we tell them, just do it in your next shift. Usually those are motor vehicle accidents. Where people aren't gonna be looking for a report in two to three days anyway, so we usually allow those to go. Critical reports like this, and we, as a command staff, view this as a critical report as far as liability back on the town that we had, we took action, is important. I looked at the log, and there were no other calls for Officer Aiman that night. So this, this happened about seven o'clock at night, I believe, and there were no other calls other than building checks until he left at eleven o'clock.
So it seems as though, um, re, some of the reasoning is, has to do with uploading. Is a report incomplete if it doesn't have all the pieces and parts to it? Meaning if other parts of the report were filed, but some, for whatever reason, photos couldn't be uploaded, is that still an incomplete report? I mean, is that a unacceptable report at that time?
We would, if I came in and reviewed the log, which is actually how I realized I didn't do the report, was I went back, looked at the log, because I, my days off are Saturday, Sunday, so I came in Monday. I went through the log, I went in that report, it was completely blank. So, if I had gone in that report, saw the narrative, saw everything else entered into it, and then saw no pictures, I would have called them and said, hey, were there any photos that needed to be uploaded? Because a lot of times there aren't, and a lot of times there are, so it's kinda, um.
That certainly would have met the criteria of, of providing a report, because that's information for other members of the department to read, because generally officers should be reading their log and the different calls from the day, so they're aware of what's going on. This family happens to be fairly active on our log, so it would have been good for them to know that we're there. We did, we did property exchange, et cetera. Um, a narrative would have absolutely sufficed, and we would understand computer glitches happening, but he could have entered a narrative.
Gonna throw it to you. Is there any, you know, reason why you couldn't have provided, you know, some level of, of, you know, information?
Due to this report, I, I, there was really nothing that I felt at the time that was pertinent in it where any liability was to put on the town. Um, that evening I just did my basic, um, property checks as well. Once I had troubles uploading pictures, uh, through my email to the system. And with that, I just went on with my normal activities that I would do any other day, uh, on the job.
Was Officer Aiman given, uh, an order to complete the report that night?
Mm-hmm.
The direct order.
That was my order to him, was that the report was to be done that night.
Quite honestly, it's not a patrolman's job to question whether something had to be in. It's the supervisor's job to question whether something has to be in.
Yeah. Okay.
And there was no, there was no other communication either on Officer Aiman's part to me during the weekend. I didn't get a phone call, even a text message that said, hey, I'm having trouble, I can't upload this, the photos. And I would have just said, we'll do the rest of the report and put the photos in when you can.
Okay.
Kind of a simple fix, but there was no communication whatsoever that that wasn't gonna get done.
All right, so can I get a little more general now?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess, you know, we, we have, uh, gone through, and the town has forever and in perpetu- perpetuity will, um, uh, issues with employees. There are, uh, whether it's in a union contract, whether it's town policy, or whatever else, of how to ultimately dole out punishment. Whether that starts as a verbal, it moves to a written, you know, all that sort of stuff. I guess, explain, if you could, why it started where it started.
Well, subordination is the very foundation of what we do. Really, how any police department operates. When an order is given, the officer is expected to carry that order out. If the order is lawful, moral, and within the officer's scope of duty. Further, the person giving the order, is a respected police sergeant with eighteen years' service at the town, must have standing to give order, which he did. Without the ability to have subordination, we couldn't function as a police department. We, we couldn't call ourselves a paramilitary organization. Subordination is that important where it, I get the whole, and we've used progressive discipline many times. I get the argument that he's never been formally disciplined. But sometimes the penalty and what, what the action is, is so egregious that it deserves, we like to use retraining, we like to use all those techniques that we can and not have to discipline people. I would love not to be sitting here and talking about discipline. I don't think talking about discipline in a public forum is neither good for morale, nor good for the police department. I believe discipline should be in private, I believe praise should be in public. But here we are.
Okay.
Subordination is, is that important where you have to go to this level. Because to not go to this level, we lose control of others that are gonna test the system. And, you know, we, we started discussing this as a he said, she said. He said, he said. Thank you. But it really, that's how orders are given. Vast majority of the time. Yes, there are emails, yes, there are different things that I put out, and that the sergeants put out. But a lot of these on-scene orders are given verbally. Now, if, if we say, well, we need proof, well then I'm gonna have to have the sergeants carry around a pad and have every patrolman initial every order that they give. That's the only way we can absolutely make sure that they receive the order. And I don't think any of us wanna be, have to do that. So, I think that's the reason why the subordination, the insubordination charges carry so much weight. So much so that in policy procedure, it says up to termination.
Have you done this before?
I think that was my question. In the past ten years, have, has it ever, has there ever been an incident or action that required this level?
So, um, you know, Mike has been here long enough to know there's at least two officers that were facing, charges that we were asking for termination that resigned prior to it getting to, to a hearing. There has been two different occasions where officers received a two days off, they weren't for insubordination. I can tell you, this is the most egregious level of insubordination based on the information at my discretion that I've seen since I've been here. I haven't seen this. Um, I was in Wansaka, Rhode Island for seven years in Internal Affairs, and, um, maybe saw a couple that came to this level. So, to answer your question, yes, I could tell you that the sergeants have sit downs with officers. We've sent guys to retraining, we've counseled guys. So the, we try to do everything we can to avoid this. And insubordination just raises to a level that, um, it is what it is.
Go ahead.
Since the incident, um, there's been no, no officer of retraining or anything along those lines. Where is any, any way to fix the, the issue?
Can I interject?
Yeah.
So, I've been doing this thirteen years here, thirty-four years in my career. There's a step two of the grievance procedure. Step two is in my office. I give, I give a opinion of, of the grievance. Generally, in the past, officers have come in with union representation, usually a state rep, and we'll talk about it, and we'll try to come to some type of agreement. At no time did that occur this time. At no time was there, did, did Officer Aiman reach out and say, can we talk about this? At no time during that whole conversation was there any contrition to the actions that would, that occurred. He just went right to the level, right, right to step three.
It was submitted to Sergeant Kucha, who gave it to chief, and he stated he would talk to me, uh, later on. He would, I would hear his response, which I did get a response, not verbally, but via, uh, mail, through the, uh, mail system.
He was on days off, and we had a timeline to meet, so it was certified mail.
That was on through the fourteen day period.
But generally, at that point, before the third, the third level comes in, there's some communication. There was no communication.
So, I mean, uh, uh, to the lack of a better way to put it, I mean, did, did, did you just, um, not, did, did you, did you react in such a way that caused a little bit of panic in you, to go the course you went, or did you?
No, also, so our, uh, our union, uh, steps that we have to follow, the first step that I have to follow is to submit that paperwork to Sergeant Kucha. And at that time, it is, and him being the union president to then submit that to the chief. So if he didn't do that step, I'm unaware of it. But once I did sit down in chief's office, when he read the grievance itself, that I did actually submit right in front of, uh, the chief and Sergeant Kucha, and not at one point was it addressed. So it did go to the appropriate steps, uh, per the union, or else we wouldn't even be able to be at this point, and it would have got thrown out. That, that's right. It, it was submitted.
Yeah.
He, he gave it to me, and it was, it was submitted through that way. Step one or two.
What I'm saying is, once I respond to it at step two, this is generally, state rep will generally contact me and come in and we'll sit down and talk.
I just need to understand.
That never happened.
Okay.
So I don't know if it would, never went to the state level, if the state union didn't take it. I don't, I don't know what happened in step, in step two, because here we are at step three.
Did it go to state level?
Uh, you have to Sergeant Kucha.
Did it go to state?
The state, the, our, our rep has everything, has all the paperwork and everything.
And usually what happens after the rep has everything?
If there's a violation of contract, or they, they see.
I just wanna be clear whether or not he's speaking as the union rep or as a sergeant here, just to check the timeline. That's a little weird.
That's why I kinda, I kinda stepped back from it, and I let, uh, Kevin Mailman handle it. He's the vice president of our local.
Okay.
So I let him handle it, most of it. But I did forward all the paperwork, because I was in contact with the rep anyway, and I told Kevin, I said, I'll send it to him, it's not a big deal, it's an email. And then from there, he looks at the contract, he sees, that he sees, if he sees a violation of the contract, or some clear egregious punishment that he thinks is unfair, then he would have drawn up paperwork to submit. He actually did reach out to me and stated based off the hearsay of the two insubordination, uh, charges, that it was egregious. And then I had, I could follow the appropriate.
What, what was egregious?
The, the fact of the hearsay, he advised me.
No, 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 what was egregious? The, 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 the punishment?
The punishment, sorry. The punishment. He did reach out to me. And he, he, um, he actually stated that it has, has to go through Sergeant Kucha first, and then it has to be submitted to the chief by Sergeant Kucha, which I sat in front of the chief at that time with that paperwork. He read it and told me, you'll have my response in fourteen days. And that was the end of it. So he did receive that paperwork. Yeah, all, all the steps were followed the right way. I mean, I, I don't see anything procedurally that, that was done.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to flesh it out, for us to understand the timelines and all that sort of stuff, too.
Mr. Jim, just to explain my, my response there, so the, the grievance process is a union process, not a town process. So it didn't come to the town until it reached Chief Perrin, and then this board. So, just, I'm not sure the public understands that, um, the, the union handles the grievance process to begin with, and then submits it on behalf of the employee, which is why I'm trying to make sure, um, it's being understood.
Sure. Carolyn, do you have, um, you're listening to our discussion here, and sort of the back and forth. Do you have, i- is there, is there anything that, that we're sort of glaringly missing, uh, to ask? I know you're limited knowledge overall of the situation, but is there anything you'd, you'd like to add?
Um, one thing I would like to add, or ask, is with respect to the one officer that the chief said was suspended. Recognizing that we're in open session and we may not be able to reveal too much, um, could you tell us what the nature of that infraction was? What was it?
Misuse of his firearm, misuse of his firearm.
With respect to ride alongs, have other officers had incidents where somebody has ridden along with them in their cruiser and exited the cruisers? That we're aware of, that through the review of the video cameras to the cruisers or anything like that?
Well, Sergeant Kucha reviews all the videos, so he could better answer that question.
Uh, no. Uh, every, every ride along that I've ever seen on the video cameras, the only person that has let anybody out of the cruiser was Officer Aiman. So he's the only one that's been disciplined for that.
What was the one that you said at that medical call?
That was before the order.
Okay.
And that was a different.
How often do you review the cameras of the kill?
So, as part of a, kind of a sticking point to the cruiser video, it's not really used as a tool to go fishing through it all and see if I can see that these guys made a mistake, and then discipline for it. So, when I, when I upload it, it gives a little, like a thumbnail picture of, um, of the stop, or whatever was going on. So, in some of those, you can, I could clearly see that somebody else was out of the vehicle, which is strange. Especially if there was nothing to really document. So then, you look at it further and you see, okay, it was the ride along. None of the other officers let anybody out of the car, so.
Go ahead, do you mind?
No. And, and to that, there are, obviously I can't mention any names, but there are other officers that do let ride alongs out of the car, whether it be medical. And also there's, um, others that will testify to this, that, um, also on motor vehicle accidents in the roadway.
I guess we're talking about after the order was made.
This is after, sir. So that, to that, I don't.
Okay.
I haven't seen anybody out of the car.
Okay.
So I, if I saw them, they would have been disciplined the same, in the same fashion.
One question I have, did all this happen in a small period of time where there was the accident? You reviewed that tape, and you followed that tape back to these other incidents where you left the.
Those were the same night as the accident.
It was all one shift?
It was all one shift, yeah.
Even the report was one shift?
With the exception of the report.
Except the report was a set in a shift, right.
There were, there were other issues that arose from that night that he wasn't disciplined for. I have notes that I had given to the chief, that we had had a conversation.
We can't speak to that. We want to speak to the discipline, sir.
Okay. Yeah, so.
This isn't a hearing. Speak to this discussion, discussion, right.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
Mr. Jim, I could also ask, I, I believe there's also something in the record, and perhaps the sergeant could just, uh, verify this, that the other sergeant, I believe, had also communicated a similar counseling or, or statement to the officer that ride alongs were not exit cruisers for a, a medical situation?
I don't know.
I actually, I actually do have a.
The chief might have.
I have a report from that sergeant.
Rushing to find the right paper never finds the right paper.
Put tabs.
Not helping.
So, Sergeant Ford wrote this letter, um, on one fourteen nineteen regarding ride alongs. Uh, because he heard that, it was told to him that he said, you could let ride alongs out of medicals.
And what, what, Carolyn, you, you don't think there's any issue with us reading a letter from another sergeant, right? We're not speaking to, about that sergeant.
No, I don't think there's anything confidential in that at all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
So in the letter, it says, sir, this letter has formally formulated Officer Aiman was advised by me of the preferred protocol in regards to anyone participating in a ride-along with our department. At that time, I informed Officer Aiman that a ride-along participant, as in the past, are only allowed to exit the police cruiser on medical calls. During a recent conversation with Sergeant Kuchar, he advised me that he recently observed that Officer Aiman allowing his ride-along specifically, the ride-along's name, to exit the cru- the cruiser approached vehicles on motor vehicle stops. Sergeant Kuchar advised me, he had a conversation with Officer Aiman about allowing his ride-along out of the cruiser on stops, as well as allowing them to participate in illuminating the interior of the vehicle with a flashlight. Sergeant Kuchar advised me that Officer Aiman's pre- response was that Sergeant Ford allowed it. Since learning of this, Sergeant Kuchar informed me that he directed Officer Aiman not to do ride-along, not to allow ride-along participants out of the cruiser. The only time that ride-along was allowed out of the cruiser was on March thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, in which time Officer Aiman and I were dispo- were dispatched to Mount Jefferson Road, what was originally a medical, and soon later resulted, uh, in another situation, which I don't wanna divulge. Um, so that was the March date that I had mentioned. The medical where it kinda went sideways, and I made it clear that the medicals weren't even on the table, to allow them out.
Okay, everyone sort of understand that, sitting back here on this side of the table? Okay, um, I guess I'll, I'll put it to us first, we'll do a little bit of order here, um, anyone else wanna ask any questions, uh, from this side of the table?
No.
And then I'm gonna go to, to council, does council wanna add anything a- at this point?
No, um, I think you did ask already about, certainly you asked about, but then yes, I do have one further question. I know, Mr. Chairman, you asked about whether or not some other officers don't necessarily submit their reports, the end of their body at the same shift. But have any other officers been disciplined in any way, whether it's been counseling, verbal warning, anything of that nature, for that type of infraction?
No, not by me.
Yeah, the sergeant would have to speak on that.
Okay, okay, fine. I can, I just have a question, if you guys have done.
Um, has, had the cruiser ever been damaged in the gravel pits before?
Uh, my first reaction to that is probably not to this extent, it may have been a scratch here and there, or something in the last thirteen years, 'cause we've been there enough, um, but never to the extent of the fifteen hundred, sixteen hundred dollar extent that this one was.
Okay, okay. All right, so, um, again, we, we're not restricted from speaking, I'm just trying to go in a little bit of order, so people have their, their time to say their piece. I guess, uh, we're here for you tonight to start off with, anyway, do you, you wanna add anything, um, based on all the discussions so far?
I, I guess my biggest thing is, uh, if, if there has been a pass where others have been disciplined for the same reasons where I'm being disciplined for, then, then obviously I, I would agree with that, but a- as it shows, there's, there's no other officers that have, um, been in my, have done, have been disciplined for, uh, whether it not be, uh, completing a report, or a cruiser accident, um, and there's actually officers now that, as, have approached me and advised that they didn't get in trouble either, for, uh, one was a, a three-point turn on, uh, New Westminster Road.
So without any, anything to support that, I don't think that's relevant.
Okay.
But I, I think, I think, with all due respect to Officer Aiman, um, I think some of the, what the conversation comes down to is whether or not a lawful, and I'm not questioning whether or not it was, I'm sure you, you gave an order. Were the other reports that weren't finished at the end of the shift, were they specifically told, finish the report?
I'm not sure, sir.
Right, so we don't know that, and what we're hearing from the sergeant is that, that the order was given, finish this report by the end of the shift, due to the nature of the thing. So, some of them is, is ap- you know, it's apples to oranges comparison, um, whether or not something was finished, like you said, a motor vehicle stop versus something they want finished 'cause of the nature of the call, so, um, so I, I don't know if we can go back and, you know, you know, we can certainly pull all the, all the report records of the last ten years and see what the average finish time is, but you don't, that, it's not told, just finish the report at, at that time or not, so I think that's where the, the question comes down.
Okay, um, you guys got, anything you wanna add?
No, I just, I, I'm just gonna reiterate, uh, the importance of, uh, insubordination and, and, and following orders.
Yep.
And the ability for us to run a police department pred- is predicated on that. And, uh, we, we, we talked this over, uh, for long periods of time, myself and both sergeants, as to what was fair. Um, and we felt that, uh, what he got, um, we felt was fair, uh, in light of the situation of what we felt were egregious violations.
Okay.
Almost, yeah.
So, in a sec, out in the crowd there, I'm gonna give you guys a chance to speak, I'm gonna go to our town administrator first to see if, hey, so you've got like twelve seconds to think of it. Uh, we're gonna, I'm gonna come to you in a second, but Ryan, you wanna add anything to this?
Just since, since we have Carolyn here, let's put you on the spot, but, um, after this is concluded, if the board could just get how to complete this process, um, advice on that, so we can make sure that everyone's rights protected.
Well, I think first and foremost, we have to bear in mind the deadline, which is, I believe, today, for making a decision, unless, of course, there's a reason to request more time, and whether or not Officer Aiman would be amenable to that. Um, but really, it becomes a two-step analysis for the board. And the first is whether or not you think you have heard enough that the actions by the officer give rise to our, our, our cause for discipline. And if you think there is sufficient cause for discipline, then the next step is, what do you think the appropriate level of discipline is? So that's really the two-step analysis you should be looking at.
Okay, and then i- is there, um, what are the options, uh, I guess from, from our side for, uh, arbitration? I don't mean arbitration, I mean it going to arbitration.
I, I, I would have to give it a fifty-fifty shot, because either side will walk out of this, this evening, somebody's going to walk out of this, I imagine, unhappy.
Yeah.
And depending upon who that is, um, the, the contract gives both parties the ability to pursue arbitration, if that's what we wanna do. Um, a- as far as what the board can do, if you do think that there was cause for discipline, then you could uphold the chief entirely, you could reduce the discipline to set anything less than the suspension that, that has been given out. If you find that you don't think that the infractions that you've heard about over the last couple of meetings, or in the reports, warrant discipline, then that's really the end of your, end of your analysis, because if you don't find that there's cause for discipline, then you're essentially overturning the chief in its entirety.
Okay, thank you. Great. Um, Ken.
So this would then be, um, written and sent to Officer Aiman, I'm not, I know you're right here, I'm not.
No.
Yes.
Um, okay, well, I'm gonna give, anybody wanna say anything about any of this, um, relat- relev- relevant to this topic, and let me just, uh.
Mr. Chairman, I may?
Don't do that.
Well, this isn't open to public discussion, it is still a grievance hearing. The fact that the officer chose to have this discussion in open session doesn't mean that anyone has the right to speak, certainly within your discretion, if you want to allow folks.
No, I, I wanna do it correctly here, this is important, so I'm sorry, everybody. Um, but, but, but we're gonna keep it at that, so that something isn't set out of turn, and makes the sort of difficult and hard work we're doing here tonight, um, uh, not applicable, or, uh, just i- interrupts the process in any way. So again, I, I apologize for that. So, I guess, uh, relevant parties, um, anyone else wanna add to it? No? Sorry, man.
Yeah, well, can I talk?
No.
Oh, okay.
Um, okay, well, so I guess it's decision time, um, let me just talk about this freely, I, I guess I'll, I'll lead, as sort of being, um, the center of some of the questions here. So, I, I guess my overall, uh, uh, view of this, um, you know, hearing all this information, and just speaking as candidly as I possibly can, I have a, I have a hard time, um, making myself, uh, believe that I should decide what is insubordination, um, from a police department, and what the chief and a sergeant thinks insubordination is, and how egregious or unegregious that insubordination is, it is not something that I feel I am qualified to, um, question necessarily. Um, definitely hear all the arguments, and hear previous examples, and all the stuff that we've talked about tonight. But I guess I'll just sort of set the table by saying that, if anyone else wants to say anything else over here.
Well, my, my concern, as we talked about in the executive session, when I asked Carolyn about, is, again, I don't, I'm not taking sides, I don't wanna get involved in this, we are, but I don't wanna get involved in it. Um, but my concern is in arbitration process moving forward, putting the town at liability for anything, I wanna try to prevent that. And my concern is without a formal policy for a ride-along, I think that's the path that that's gonna go down. That, that, that's the path that's gonna end up going down, in, in the legal world, is whether or not an, an order was given, and given clearly enough, but there's no policy, that's where I see this going. I, myself, don't wanna question the, the cruiser damage, the report, I don't even go down that road. Our, you know, chief and sergeants made a ruling on that, to me, I'm gonna let that, I would let that stand completely, I wouldn't touch that. Um, but I would just worry about the liability we have, and the fight that's gonna end up possibly going into for the, um, for the ride-along stuff.
And, and we, you know, we, you're right, we talked about that and considered it, but that, that, the policy that the chief, um, regarding like orders, the one that he read, that has to do with verbal or written orders, you know, I, can, can you grab it, please, just so I'm not guessing which of the documents it was, it was early in your.
Right, the orders are lawful if they're, you know.
Can I read this? I'm, I'm just gonna read this out loud. An order is defined, and this is Rules and Regulations Commonwealth of Massachusetts, an order is defined as a command or instruction, oral or written, given by one member of the department to another member of lesser rank, it is essential to the proper operation of a police agency that officers promptly obey all lawful orders. Every officer of the department shall promptly obey, without reservation, the orders, rules, regulations, policies, and procedures of the department, and all lawful commands of a superior officer, including those commands relayed from a superior by an officer of the same or lesser rank. The intentional refusal to obey any direct lawful order is grounds for termination. So, we are hearing that this order was made, and we're hearing it was not, essentially, because you're saying you didn't intentionally do it, so.
Like I said, it would never intentionally have.
But, but still, that's a su- that's essentially saying that it, it didn't happen, because then it would have been intentional, so it's essentially saying that. So that's the, the crux of it there, you know? Thank you.
So, I think he's absolutely right, I think it's, this is about the order, not the policy. I think legal actually confirmed that, an order is an order, and it's a verbal order, I don't think. Whether, 'cause I can't give them a policy on everything that could possibly happen. So, because the policy that was left over, which, as you know, we're reviewing them all now, and you'll get a new one on this, but these policies are archaic, they worried about different things that aren't really important now. Um, so, it's an order, and it, these, these policies that are kind of vague have to be buffeted with orders, to clarify. It's whether they be done in a general order by me, a memorandum, an email, or a verbal order.
So I'll, I'll make a suggestion to the board, just to throw something else, we gotta start somewhere. So, um, keeps, keep intact discipline for cruiser damage in the pits.
And that was how many?
One day.
Keep in, keep in effect, um, discipline for not completing the report.
Two days.
Vacate the suspensions for the, uh, ride-alongs, but put a, a written warning in his, in his ch- in his, uh, personnel file.
And how many days was that?
Uh, five.
Five.
Ride-alongs were, um, four suspended, and one to serve.
So five.
Five.
Five, but he's got four right now, uh, suspended, suspended, so to speak.
Right, so we'll keep the one, the two, vacate the, um, the ones for the ride-along. Uh, we keep a written warning in the, in his personnel file, and, uh, ask our department to actually put together a formal policy for ride-alongs, at that point.
And so, thi- this, just to re- restate your, your thought process on this, is, is mostly, it's not had anything to do with whether or not you believe Sergeant Kuchar or not. It has to do with the fact that.
I'm not taking.
That's what I mean, yeah.
On anything, because I was in there, so.
Town protection, overall, what the appropriate decision of the board should be to most protect the town, based on all the information we've been presented with.
Correct, and that is not denying the professionalism or, or structure of our police department, that is looking forward into arbitration process.
It's more lamenting the struggles of the legal department.
Yes, thanks, Carolyn.
Could I add one thing?
Yes.
The, the four days suspended, it has a, a huge reason. Uh, because it, it keeps Officer Aiman, or, or anybody that would be charged with this, um, from doing it again without severe penalty. So, um, I know your, your suggestion would say vacate all the stuff that's suspended, uh, suspended, uh, but I would, and I, I've just given.
Yeah.
My opinion, uh, it takes away a little bit of teeth of what we have in the future for insubordination.
I, I actually kinda agreed with what Mike said. Now, I agree an order is an order, but what if the order is misunderstood and not given directly enough, where, like Officer Aiman said, he not only let him out once, but he let him out four other times, that he, I kinda have to, I would probably think the same way, why would he do that intentionally four times, or say five times, if he knew that was a direct order? You know, if, if maybe he did misunderstand the order, and thought it was for his relative that was riding along with him. You know, that's the only way I'm looking at this.
Again, my, my only opposition to that is, uh, we'll be here more for people that say, I don't under- I didn't understand the order, and that'll be it. Everybody will say that. So, barring writing everything down, I don't know how we can ensure that, uh, orders are given and received clearly and concisely.
That's a good point.
Can I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
With that being said, out of, out of the five years completed, which will be, uh, towards the end of April, going on my sixth year, it's never been an issue before where I never understood an order. So, this is just to show that I, I clearly did not understand the order to be on all ride-alongs, other than, uh, just my nephew. So I, I've understood every other order for the past five years that I've been employed here, um.
I don't, and then just to interject, I don't actually think Chief was really talking about using.
No, just in general, I'm just saying, overall. No, 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 just, just saying in general with this, with this incident.
So, Chief, that actually brings up a good, good point, if Officer Aiman's been here serving, you know, professional capacity for the last five years, why all of a sudden in a span of like two months, is there an issue?
I've, I've seen it happen in thirty-four years, and, and doing what I've, I've done, I've seen guys put seven, ten years, and all of a sudden have, uh, misjudgments and bad months. I, I can't answer why he would, uh, do it, um, but I can say I've seen it, I've seen officers have a bad couple of months.
In words of wisdom, Jim.
No, I, I agree with the, um, the reduction on the ride-along, though, and, um, you know, the policy's gonna be getting updated on that, and, um, so there should be no unders- misunderstandings in the future on that.
No, but out of the three hundred other things that come, are there gonna be misunderstandings, I think that's the big concern. You know, I don't think the ride-along thing's gonna, I don't feel like it's gonna be too big, much of an issue in, in the, uh, in the department, in the future.
It's on my desk, yeah.
To be honest.
Two weeks, you're probably gonna get it.
Oh.
Carolyn, any advice?
Unfortunately, as I said, no matter what you do tonight, it's likely that we wind up an arbitration on this.
So then the other option, another option is to.
Kick the can down the road.
No, no, I don't wanna do that, I, I'm, I just, I don't wanna do that, this, I don't feel as though there's any information that's gonna surface, that's gonna make our decision any easier.
No, you're saying, go right to our, just quit the arbitration.
Nope, I'm saying, that the, another, another option is, you know, to uphold some of those days. Right, we have the option, there's a five-day thing in there for that, for the ride-alongs, right? So we could still reduce that to some number that says, okay, um, you know, and again, I know that may set a little bit of a precedent, but for it not going away completely, that puts us in a better position in the future. You know, to be able to say, say it went from five to three, or some number, uh, and, um. And, um, you know, uh, again, somebody may come in, say, well, I didn't hear that order correctly, and, and, you know, you did this, but at least we upheld some of it. Didn't just go away completely.
So, for the record, Officer Aiman has served four already.
Of a total of, what was it?
Four.
No, I know, but total, there's still.
There's eight total. He's served four. He has four suspended.
Okay.
But, but.
All right, so, so, so there was five on that night. So, if we give him a suspension for one of, just for the day, you get one suspension because you screwed up that day instead of giving one for each of the five, then that would be the one already served, and then you vacate the four that are being held, and you replace them with a written warning.
And for future, um, sort of lack of a better way to say it, future explanation, in the event that this situation, again, not with ride alongs, uh, comes up, you know, our, our response, that doesn't really change our response on that, right? We, we basically, I'm trying, I, I was get, going towards whether or not it was the right idea to, to shave it so much down. Because then it went, you know, it's twenty percent of what it started at, you know, so that, that's, um, not quite setting a precedent of wiping the slate, but close. So, just trying to put the town in, in a better position for future items.
All right, so we leave. So, it goes back kind of what I first kind of threw out there. We, un, cruiser damage, uh, untouched. Um, order to complete the report untouched already, those two, those three days are already served.
Yeah.
He served one day for the insubordination for the ride alongs, and then there's four left.
Four.
Which would be the other four, there was five incidents that night.
Correct.
They got out of the car in one day.
Yeah.
So, one day suspension served in recognition for, um, letting the person out of the ride along, and then the other four vacated with a warning.
I believe one of the days for the, uh, the report, for the two days, I believe one of those is over my head still. I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but Chief, I believe Chief has it.
There's one, one and four, and two.
One.
Three served, one served with four.
How many of the ride alongs were served?
One served with four.
Okay.
We're using a term over your head, but four to be held in case of future incidents.
Yeah, I think that.
Okay, cool. Look, can we say it one more time? I, I didn't, I wanted to make sure I fully understand what you're saying.
All right, we have, we have three, three charges. Insubordination for, um, the damage to the cruiser.
No, that's, uh, um.
That was just straight out damage.
Right, yeah.
Okay. Damage to the cruiser.
One day.
One day. Insubordination for not finishing a report by a direct order, that was two days.
Two days. No, two more days. We can.
Two more, sorry, 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 yep, sorry. Two more days. And then we have one, I said, I'm gonna hold up the wrong finger. Um, we have four days, then five days for insubordination for allowing a ride along to get out five times in one shift. One of those has been served.
Correct.
Okay, uh, just on one point to that, with, uh, it's, so for the ride along getting out, it was four incidents. One was one day, one was one day, one was one day, and one was two days for that.
Okay.
So, for the same, all the same insubordination charges, one was actually two days.
For, for offenses. Still looking at five days.
Why was it put for two days versus the one?
It was more progressive, because he kept doing it that night. Uh, I know it was just one night, but it was still, you know, it was still, it was still that many times in one night, so.
And those were the ones that were, uh, I don't want to say hanging over his head, but were held in advance.
So, at this point, you've served four?
Total, yes, sir.
Served four total without pay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that, that has to do something to tier two, is that if whatever gets reinstated, it gets reinstated as, as, um.
I, I do just ask is that one, that was one, 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 two, if, if that could at least be dropped back down to the one day to, to be the same a- along the board, at least.
Uh, I don't have an opposition to that. So, now you're just dealing with four suspended and four days.
Four days.
Right. You concur with that?
I, I just believe if, if it's one, 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 it should be one, one, one across the board instead of one, 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 two, for that same, for the same exact incident.
That was the report, was the two days.
No, 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 one of the ride, all the ride along.
So, the ride along.
The last insubordination of the ride alongs was two, because of the progressiveness of it, but I don't have a problem with doing one. But those are, again, there's only one of the insubordination. There's two from the report, and two of the insubordinations that he's already served.
There's four other insubordinations.
You're saying eliminate one?
No, I'm just saying, there's all along the board, they should just be, uh, a fair.
I, I just wanna throw this out there. Again, we're just trying to get there. Would you be amenable to one count of insubordination for those five days, or four day, whatever, instead of?
For the, for the ride alongs.
For the ride alongs, instead of four counts, it just looks worse. I'm assuming it looks worse than your five.
So, I can offer, we're at three days with the report and, uh, one of the insubordinations.
Yep.
Four hanging over his head are all from the same night. So, if you wanna, you wanna say the four days he served, and wipe out the four hanging over his head and give him a letter of reprimand, a written letter, I can, I can, I can buy into that. I think that's where you're going.
It is.
I, I, I can, I can work with that.
Uh, all we can do is turn our eyes to you, you know, you know, we're here for that, that's, I, I understand the position you're in, I'm just saying, we're talking here, so I guess what?
Well, I don't think there's a negotiation that's really between those, these two parties.
I know that, but we need to, I, I think, I, when I, no, I know that, but, but I guess I, more than anything, and he doesn't have to tell me whether he'd go to arbitration or not, but that's what I'm sort of just trying to figure out based on reaction and discussion, all that, is whether or not it's gonna get there anyway. But, you know, so be it. Um, what, what Chief just, just said made sense to me.
Yep.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, um.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so how do we make this motion, Orion or Carolyn? What is the proper way to do this? Amen, amend the discipline?
Why don't we take each one, might be a little easier, or do one complete motion, so I believe the first, the first charge with respect to violation of the vehicle policy, the damage to the cruiser, you uphold the one day suspension.
Yes.
Why don't we do this progressively? She's figuring it out.
Yeah. All right, so we make a motion on that one? Or we, we don't, we don't touch that one, because we're not amending it, right?
You'd still take a vote.
Yes.
But whether you wanna take three separate votes, or you wanna just take one vote, and I can list it off, however you wanna do it.
All right, so I'll make a motion to uphold the, um, one day suspension for damage to the department vehicle. Which is for, for one day.
Okay.
Second the motion.
In discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
The next one would be that you, uh, would uphold the charge of insubordination for failure to prepare or to submit a timely report, which was a two day suspension.
I'll make a motion to uphold the, uh, discipline, which is a two day suspension for failure to, for insubordination for failure to complete a timely report when ordered to do so.
Second.
In discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. Here's the tricky one.
And then, and then with respect to the third one, it would be a motion to reduce the discipline for the insubordination relative to ride alongs. To find over, these are my words now, you can tweak this a little bit, but to find, um, so you wanna do a written discipline as well as one day suspension?
Correct.
Or just one day suspension cumulatively?
What do we wanna do?
No, no, just do the one day.
One day, one day.
I mean, it, it all becomes something that's a writing that's put in a personnel file.
Right.
Sure, okay.
So, we're just gonna do the one, one day suspension.
Just a one day suspension, so then to reduce, to reduce the discipline imposed for the ride alongs for insubordination to one day suspension.
I'll make the motion to reduce the discipline for ride alongs from five days to one day.
For insubordination.
For insubordination, um, from five days to one day.
I'll second it. Discussion?
The only issue I have is without a verbal, do we set ourselves up with not going progressively again?
Without a written, you mean?
Without a written.
Well, we've already done a one day suspension, acknowledging that, right?
Okay.
I, I'm, again, just clarify, clarify the department policy.
No, as you said earlier, Chief, sometimes there are certain offenses that, depending upon how egregious they are, you don't have to start with a verbal warning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'm gonna also make another motion, which I know it's already in progress, to direct the police department to please have a written policy for ride alongs.
They will get that two weeks from tonight.
I'll second that.
New discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
So, I mean, just in, in closing here, so we've now complied with our extension to April first of ruling on this matter.
Does, you know, does the written response have to be on April first?
That might be a little bit difficult to do, so perhaps.
I mean, I'm.
I mean, you, you voted, you know what the action is actually taking this evening. What you would then be doing is just memorializing that in, in a writing that then goes into the officer's personnel file.
Okay.
Then yes.
Okay, um, thanks for coming, everybody.
Thank you. If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Uh, just that Officer Aiman has served for almost six years in, in the department now, and has expressed that he's, um, ready and willing to move past this to me, um, and serve in our community, so I'm gonna take him at as, as word that that's there. And also like to thank the professionalism of our command team, um, in responding to all these different inquiries. And I'm, I'm positive that we will be able to move past this. Um, we have an excellent police department, one of our many excellent departments, and, and this will certainly not, not define it in any way.
And, uh, just to add to that, of course, um, our reputation is just awesome. And I know, as you stated earlier, that this is the sort of stuff that can potentially make it less awesome. But I think the way it was conducted tonight, I think the professionalism on all sides, the way everybody sort of just, uh, took it seriously, the way everybody in the room sort of just let the process go, I think is more of a credit than anything.
And if I could echo, Sergeant Kuchar, uh, did have a great point, and, um, he works closely with Officer Aiman. He wants to move past this, and we want to move past this, and we think Mike Aiman, uh, has great talents, uh, with the community. There's no denying that.
Yep.
Um, and I had a conversation when I did give it out the discipline, I don't like giving out discipline, that I don't want this to define him. I want him to use this as a learning tool and move on. Because we're more than willing to move on from this.
Awesome. Okay, once again, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have two minutes?
Do I take two minutes?
Oh, yeah, uh, we're gonna recess for three minutes.
My name's Jared Paulins. I'm actually with the town council's office as well. I got in right as the meeting was starting, so I didn't have a chance to introduce myself.
Thanks for coming.
Could've asked him to chime in too, you didn't.
I didn't know, you didn't tell us who he was.
It's all right.
You, uh, you went to the right source at this juncture.
I'm in tomorrow.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks, Carol.
Good night, folks. Let's address the meeting.
Please be advised that we are still being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Just letting everybody know.
Oh, talking about D-Rimmer balls?
No, no, not you, not you. Reminding myself out loud, that's what I was doing.
But the cameras are showing the whole town while you're talking.
Yeah.
It's all right.
I don't know, something was there. It wasn't mine.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thanks, man. See you.
Officer Aiman should bring more grievances, full house.
Good support, good support.
See you, guys.
I gotta turn the, uh, he turned, it would've gone. He turned the, he turned six degrees before the meeting started.
Oh, this is more because he turns red. I can see Ryan, like, peeing up with sweat in his coat sometimes.
We're gonna go right after the annual town meeting draft warrant review. But another minute, like I said, three minutes. Do we have anything to this? No, nothing. It's, uh, it was only a tap.
Yeah, and that's what I thought.
Just confirming, that's not in our packet, right? It's not on Google Drive?
It is.
Is it its own folder?
It is called. I have it in here, just it's not loading.
It's in here.
Oh, yeah. It's just not numbered. Okay, see.
Man, mine's, I keep.
Yeah, mine's not all.
Well, there's two files. Open the other one. There you go, open the other one. Yeah, sure, we'll do that first.
We're usually minimal.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, I don't know.
So, yeah, I can see it, but, yeah, yes.
All right, so we've got our three minute recess that's completed now. Um, we're gonna jump around a little bit here, uh, again, um, to accommodate, and we'll go to old business item four, which is the continued road maintenance plan discussion prior to doing the, uh, annual town meeting draft warrant review. You wanna start us off, Ryan?
I do, so, uh, thank you. We had a presentation of the road maintenance plan and had great participation from the public, tons of comments. Uh, the board had a little bit of time to digest that, so mainly we're looking for, uh, in addition to, I believe, we have members of the public here that wanna speak on the topic.
Yep.
Uh, but also the idea that the FY twenty plan has been in place for a couple of years. We're ready to go and to send that out. That's the Morgan, I always could say High, High something.
Bridge.
High Bridge, Morgan, and Underwood. Um, we're ready to go on that and, and get the project started for when it is, when it is funded. Uh, so looking for approval of the FY twenty plan, and then of course, continue the discussion in the years past.
Uh, my opinion on that is, I was thinking about this earlier, is, is, is I think the fact that it's the first year, if we tried to, if we'd messed with it, you know, after doing that open meeting, everyone discussing, I think that'd be not a good idea. So, whether we change the plans moving forward, you know, that's gonna be up for discussion. My, my opinion is to leave next year, next year.
Yeah, maybe we could add something to the warrant as far as funding for the roads.
Yeah, there, there's been a lot of, a lot of discussion about, um, an override for roads. So, maybe, you know, I think we'd have to discuss this pretty quickly. I don't know if we can tonight, may, maybe under the town meeting warrant draft review, but, um, maybe hold off on the building and show the public that we can actually, you know, uh, address their concerns. Because people aren't necessarily clamoring about, we need a new, a new, new building, we, we need one of our roads fixed. So, um, what about a, you know, an override for, a five year override for roads? We put five hundred thousand dollars into roads from an override, plus the three fifty plus from chapter ninety. I mean, you can look at, you know, eight, nine hundred thousand dollars a year for the next five years of just repairing roads.
If I could add to that, Mike, I, I was thinking about it too, and, um, I was thinking the three hundred thousand number may be a little bit more palatable for three years. And what, the reason for that is we could, the chapter ninety money's about three hundred thirty thousand. So, if we say three hundred thousand, two and a half override, for three years, we could double, well, not double, but almost double our roadwork for three years in a row. And you can see what three hundred thirty thousand does. Like last year it did Adams, New Westminster, and Prentice Hill. So, you, you've got, that's what we can do with three hundred thousand, so we could do double that every year for the next three years. I mean, five hundred thousand is great, it's more ambitious, but, you know, people sometimes are, I think, maybe the three hundred thousand number, maybe, for three years. That would put, so if we get three thirty for, you know, that would put a road that's potentially six years out. You know, if you're at, you know, seven years from now, you could, you could be three years, you know, if, and I wouldn't wanna fund it for one year, because as we just do it for one year, then there's less people on board. You know, as more paving gets done, there'll be less support, you know, you know, Gordy and and Dogwood, like, once they're done, then there's less support to, you know, if you did it for one year, so I think the three-year plan, or, you know, five years is ambitious.
Yeah, I mean, it's five, that encompasses more, even more, more people in that.
And what we could do, you you know, I I agree with you, and if it's a, like, a rousing success, we can always bump a, bump it or augment it at a, so future town meeting, two years, three years from now, that sort of thing. The three hundred to five hundred, for example, people were just really rallying around it, so, but so I think starting at the three, for the five years is a great idea.
Or just match it, do do three fifty.
Yeah, yeah.
Man, ma- ma- match, just match the chapter ninety funds, we're gonna match chapter ninety funds for the next five years.
Wow, the only thing there, though, is that we don't, we can't really predict whether the two hundred million's gonna come, the three hundred million's gonna come, what's gonna come from the state, so.
Yeah, but we use, we, we always average about three fifty, three forty, three fifty.
Yeah.
Some years we got a four hundred, cause we got more, but I would say at least match our average for the last couple of years for the next five years.
Fine, yeah.
So just do a three fif- a three fifty number, whether whatever comes for the s- with the state, but go with a three fifty number.
Sure. Yeah.
But if you do just one year or two years, the support, I think, you know, you say rallying around, I think will decrease as more roads get paved.
You're totally right, you're totally right. My road's done.
Exactly. There's gonna be, so if you go for a three-year or a five-year, you know, maybe three-year, three fifty.
So, wh- what I would, what I would ask is, if there's support to put that on the warrant as an override, this this town meeting, in this ballot, um, if we can have Travis come back with a road plan that it, that has that built in, that if we have three fifty from chapter ninety, three fifty from an override, what does seven hundred thousand dollars of roadwork every year for the next five years look like? What's gonna get hit, what's, what's, what are we gonna get? So at town meeting, we can actually show that and say, this is the money, this is what's gonna happen in year one, year two, year three, year four, um, all the way down the line.
Yep.
Yeah, cause people wanna see what they're gonna get for their money. Not, not just.
And I do think we need to put, I I was really disappointed that in the five-year plan, plus the additional five-year plan, uh, nowhere on there was the Dogwoods and Jordy.
Yeah, that, I think.
That, that's, that's really a shame, because.
Well, in Travis's defense, it was only, the road's only ten years old.
True.
So that you've got roads that are thirty years old, forty that haven't been, ever been done, that are horrible, but that road is only ten years old, and, you know.
Um, what is the mechanism for funding? I hear a number, but what's the?
It would be a debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion.
Debt exclusion, not a, not a two and a half override.
Yeah, debt exclusion. Well, a debt exclusion is a two and a half override, but.
I know, but it has a termination.
It has, yeah, debt exclusion.
Five-year debt exclusion?
It's a five-year debt exclusion, so if you do three fifty a year times five years, that would be the total debt exclusion. But we would get three fifty a year, every year.
And then it'll go away.
And what would you say to kicking money in from, uh, free cash? We're sitting on six hundred plus in there, and, my three hundred plus in, in, um, stabilization.
What do we have, Ryan? It's gonna be four hundred and one thousand in free cash.
I have what?
Four hundred and one thousand in free cash currently.
We're trying to, this is, you know, best practices is, you know, one of our goals, or.
Five percent thing.
And one of Ryan's goals, I know, too, and so I think depleting that, um.
Not depleting it, but, uh, tapping it.
Yeah.
So the, the road plan that was presented, the five-year plan, starting at year two, includes the use of free cash as outlined in the five-year capital plan, a hundred thousand extra, so that num- if you remember the presentation, the blue roads are the ones that are represented by free cash usage. The reason why that was pushed two, three, four, five years out is because we've done enough capital this year, we're being really aggressive. We can start to wean off of the, the new trucks and the cruisers and get on a better plan so that we can use some of the money for, for the roads if it comes in. But free cash has to generate, the, um, the economy has to stay the same, so the difference between using a, a capital outlay, which is what we'd be doing, saying we're gonna raise taxes this much each year, um, is that, that's guaranteed if you vote it and the townspeople still want it. Whereas free cash, you don't, you don't know what's gonna happen, so you really couldn't commit to free cash number.
Okay, so this item started with, um, Ryan, um, getting consensus whether or not we were in favor of proceeding, at least with year one of the five-year road plan. I think what we're saying here is probably not, right? If we're thinking about adding a warrant article, we're then changing that plan, right? We're adding to it, but.
Well, we're adding to it, but it, we wouldn't get the money necessarily right now, right? So you'd still, this construction season, you'd still want year one.
We'd be, yeah.
Okay.
So I think you would then make a five-year plan, starting, what, FY twenty-one?
Yeah.
To twenty-six.
Alright, well, let's, we're, we're.
So we just, I just wanna, I'm sorry, it's just, the reason why it's now is because we need to bid it now, cause we're competing with other projects.
Yeah.
So if we don't say that we're gonna, I mean, it still has to be funded by town meeting, but if we wait until town meeting, then we'd be bidding, it might not happen by the fall. So we, we wanna get it, the.
So we, we wanna approve this, this summer's construction, and then
At least the base.
present a plan for next construction season onwards.
Sounds good.
With, with the additional.
And with the idea that maybe this year we could get something squeezed in, but we'd wanna get something done.
Do you want, do you wanna motion on that?
Um, it, yes, and not advocating for anything, except that we have a plan, that's a good base to move from.
Okay, then I wanna get a motion going, just try to move, so when, when we get to discussion.
Okay.
I'll, I'll.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the FY twenty road plan, as presented.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Not on the FY twenty, if it is the one that's presently on the table.
That's the only thing presently on the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
My, my discussion would lean towards the future money, I'd, I'd.
Well, 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 let us get through this motion, and then we'll, 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 we'll go to that, so, any further discussion?
Okay, that's fine.
On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's procedurally, go ahead.
Before I forget, I'm sorry, Tom, just, uh, Deb Chamberlain sent in an email, I don't wanna forget to read it.
Mm-hmm.
So, uh, Deb Chamberlain of Seven Laurel Street, um, she couldn't make it tonight, it's not necessarily, I don't wanna read that sentence. But I would like to respectfully request that Dogwood North, Laurel Street, and Jordy Lane, uh, in parentheses, Blueberry Farm be added to road maintenance plan for paving. I would further request that in the immediate future, the millings be removed from our roads, and maybe returned to some type of passable condition. As I stated in a previous meeting, it's created an unsafe condition for travel, especially emergency vehicles, pedestrian, motorcycle, bicycle dogs, and has made a large mess on the side of the roads, and I'm sure is filling the catch faces. Since it did not bind to the roadway, it would be better to remove it, as you have on other roads.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, two things, or several things, um, this money, I understand it would be, um, used by a subcontracting process for paving.
Mm-hmm.
And I think the motion needs to include the fact that it is not, uh, highway equipment, because the paving subcontractors come with their own, and it is not additional staff, it is devoted to subcontract paving. Second thing is, I don't know, but I'd ask, does the town putting up its own money, uh, in some way, reduce the magnitude or the probability of receiving state grants?
It actually makes it better.
You can leverage it.
You could leverage that, yes, right.
Okay, that's what we wanna do, then.
Yep.
And then, uh, the third one, I think I've had a senior moment.
Yeah.
Oh, I was gonna say that, uh, the, uh, viewing this through the planning board lens and the economic development committee lens, because this town doesn't have, uh, sewer, and water, and rail, and high-speed internet, it has internet, but, um, roads are, are infrastructure, and that is the way to bring economic development.
Agreed.
How, how's prices go up, and the whole thing.
Yep, um, no, I think, I, I agree, so, we're not, um, let's continue on this item, we, we can talk a little bit further when we get into the warrant discussion, whether or not we're gonna add a warrant article, and we can use some terminology there, if we feel necessary and all that. But we are, we do have somebody here, um, you know, wha- what?
For a multi-year, I'd like to talk to that when we get to it.
We're, uh.
We're here, right.
We're here.
Yeah. Let's do it, then happy April, gentlemen.
This isn't an April, it's just.
If you could just introduce yourself and where you live.
Sure, uh, Glenn Gregory, uh, living in Jordy Lane, part of Blueberry Farms.
Yeah.
Um, I'd sent, uh, I sent a letter and I, I found a guidance document from New Jersey, I don't know if guys, if you got you, or you had a chance to read it or whatever.
She sent it to us.
Alright, terrific. Um, so, and it, I mean, let's see, my, my goal i- is kinda twofold, is, is one, to stop the use of, of these unbound millings, um, and then two, what do we do about cleaning them up? I was unaware that all the streets in town have, uh, have cleaned up those unbound millings. Uh, and that, it was in Debbie Chamberlain's letter, um, I don't have Travis to talk to about that, but, so that, twofold, that's, that's, that's my, my goal. So, again, with the unbound millings, this document I got from New Jersey, uh, this guidance document, um, they taught, they, they say use millings. It's, it's a, it's a great thing to recycle, but to, to bind them in some way, use them as a base coat, cover it with asphalt, mix it with a material that, that would bind it, so it, it doesn't run off. Unbound, that, that's, that's the danger, that, we're seeing that again in Jordy. You know, they just migrate to, to the, to the sides of the roads, and then down to storm drains, uh, and off into, you know, the wetlands or whatever behind us.
So, um.
Yep.
The prob- the, the, I agree with you, of course, it's what, it's what's called an emulsifier, is that you add it to the millings, and it reacts with what's already bituminous, um, in there to bind it up. Uh, the problem is, is, is the reason we use the millings in the first place is cause they were free. So, once you get to that next stage, next step, things be- become not free, and you typically need some specialty help to be able to apply it, uh, so that's gonna withstand time.
Yep, yep, understood.
Yep.
Um, uh, and, and so maybe we just don't use them at all, is my argument.
I, 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 I agree with him, I don't think they should be used on roads with asphalt that's already on them, because there's nothing for it. If you were gonna spread them on maybe a dirt road and work it in, I think there's a, there's a, that's a good scenario. But when you're spreading a thin layer over a road, even though it's not completely paved with all the potholes, but there's nothing, you, you put an inch of
It's just gonna go in.
Millings on it, it does, there's not enough.
I agree with you, I, I couldn't agree more.
But I think, you know, and I, I understand they tried it.
It was good intentions.
It was good intentions, and I, and I, I was all for Travis trying it.
Yeah.
Again, with a limited budget, he's, he's doing what he can do.
Yep.
Uh, to, to, just to show how that's, kind of, that's where we, you know, when it migrates to the side. This is the, the storm drain outside my house. So, you know, it's not much left, and then where it's, where it empties out is, again, wetlands.
Yeah.
And, and the environmental hazards that, that, that this guidance document is talking to, um, they're concerned with the wetlands. Um, and even when it's, even when it's dry in, in the, in the summer, you know, a cow will go down the road and you'll have a dust cloud following it. And, and you have the same carcinogens that, that are, you know, just being spread across the neighborhood, you know.
Um, one thing, when they put them down, it's like best in July and August, because the heat will also make them bind.
Yep.
And I believe, I don't know when Travis put them down, but I think because of the schedule on at sixty-eight, it may have been later in the season.
It was later, from my understanding, later in the season, yeah.
And it just, it didn't have the warmer temp- temperatures, I'm not really a proponent of putting it on over an asphalt layer, maybe on the dirt roads. But in July and August, when the heat has a chance to, to, you know, you roll it, but that heat makes a big difference, just the sun baking it in.
That's a good point.
It can really pack, just like asphalt.
Yeah, he did, he, he did lay it down, um, soon after, he, he had this, like, I heard it was Travis' washboard effect. Um, so he came back and, uh, graded it, um, again, I ca- I, I couldn't tell if he, if he rolled it or not, but, again, it, the heavy rains, it's just not gonna stay there.
You're right about the pavement, I mean, Pat's right, I mean, you, you've got a whole different friction type plane when you're on, uh, dirt roads, right? So it's got that chance, if you're on a sl- sliding asphalt surface, it's not gonna really have a chance to, to lock in, so, yeah, I, I mean, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, just that there's, we get as many compliments about the millings as complaints, uh, the complaints are obviously more severe, but in, in sections of the town where millings were used, there've been significant improvements in, in the road travel, Flag Road comes to mind. Um, and I know that there are sections that are dirt, or used to have asphalt, et cetera, so it's, it's not always the same condition. But we're, we're out of patch right now, we're through all of our road materials because they're expensive. Uh, we included ten thousand dollars in, in the, my budget proposal to add more patch, but people also don't like patch, cause eventually it pops out of the hole and ends up on the side of the road as well. So, if, if you do take away some of the material we have, then we're not gonna have the same ability to, to patch potholes. So I agree that, you know, in certain spots, it might not be advantage, but I think you'd have just as many people in here complaining that their roads were bad, if you didn't give some options or levers to never use millings or.
Well, then we go case by case, right? I mean, we, we don't have to have a policy necessarily, um.
That, that's what I'm worried, is that, that we're gonna ban one of the few materials we have, we don't have, but.
No, no, I, I, I'm glad you.
I think it has its, its good uses, but there's certain uses where it shouldn't be applied. And I think, like Dan said, that should be a case by case, I, I honestly don't believe putting it on, on top of an existing asphalt road is a good application of those.
And I think at the last meeting, we had a, a number of folks to back you up.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, very of our plans are coming from that application, so for sure, but, um, it's, it's a resource problem.
May, maybe we would wanna.
We wanna pave all the roads, we don't wanna put millions in roads.
No, I, 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 I hear that, um, but I, I think what, Pete would argue that this is making it worse. I would make that argument. Again, and then you have that whole environmental, again, New Jersey put out a guidance document, and again, I, I, P does not have a similar guidance document, I did outstanding, um, but, uh, yeah, I mean, it, it's, I don't know if you had a chance to, if you saw this yourself. It's not a good thing, it's, it's certainly not a good thing, for the environment.
I don't know enough about the science, but, yeah.
Yeah.
When the road crumbles, it's the same thing to, you know, it's an asphalt product, and your road is doing the same.
But at least you don't have that fine, that, that fine particle that's, that's, that's getting into, you know, getting to the air, with, you know, in, in dry weather, and into the wetlands when, uh, this time, yeah.
Yeah, it's too bad, maybe if it was done in July or August, it would've held better and maybe a better result, but, uh, in, in the end, you're gonna sup- maybe support the, uh, paving, if we can get this on the, uh.
I'm all for, and I, I'd like the idea of, of the longer timeframe that you have.
Yeah, and get these roads paved and put an end to a lot of this, you know.
Yeah.
Tom, do you wanna say something?
Um.
Did you forget?
Yeah, they, they put it down on Old Colony, I think, uh, did that hold up?
I think, cause most of that was dirt on the end, old, the end of Old Colony, and it, it did hold up somewhat. I think the plowing kinda damaged it a little bit, but it was a strange year, cause it was.
In the rains.
Yeah.
You know, in the rain, but I think on dirt applications, it does work well if they can grade them in.
That was dirt.
Yeah.
And build a, build a solid base here.
And then, uh.
You can even crown, too, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the thing is, too, is it kinda mimics the surface, like, on, is it Gordy?
Yeah.
Like, if it's all potholes, and then they fill it in, it just mimics what's on, you know, if you don't disturb what's underneath, you're kinda mimicking what's underneath.
Yeah, it's hard to. Yeah. Yeah.
It, it's funny you say that, you, you, yeah, that, that.
You know, you gotta really.
The potholes are kinda a little bit deeper, it's where the, the millings, where the potholes were.
They're still there.
The, the mil- there's still the, the millings that have raised the, the surrounding hole another couple of inches or so.
Yeah. Yeah.
What would be the plan for sixty-eight North Groundings?
Don't know, that's a good question.
I mean, we could just have them for the dirt roads, you know, we just have it.
And, and whatever.
An inch or inch and a half, or two?
Well, I think that's the problem, you gotta go thick, you gotta go thick.
No, what are they taking off?
Oh, on six.
Usually it's inch and a half overlay.
I think it's inch and a half.
Again, this guy's.
Lot of yards.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
I'm sorry, but this guidance document says they act a beneficial thing to use as, as a base, you know, and the asphalt, so as you have new roads going in, or, or reworked roads.
Yeah, no, I mean, nine times out of ten, the, the asphalt companies want it, cause they incorporate it back into it, so.
Yeah, they recycle it. Yeah.
Uh, Travis was able to, to, was able to do whatever he was able to do here, to say, I want those, uh, but typically the pavement companies, they, it's, it's a commodity for them.
Yeah. And it does add to the base, so if the road was gonna be done, like he, I added it down on, um, more, High Bridge, and that's gonna be pulverized, I imagine, and that'll add to the base, you know, make, make a, a better road.
It will. Um, okay, well, I, I, I think we took action on, on what that item was intended for, and then discussed it, um, a little bit more. Is there anything else you wanna add at this time?
Again, I, I don't know who, um, again, that decision, whether or not to use them in Jordy, who, who makes that decision?
Well, we're gonna reinvigorate Travis on this conversation, I think, and just talk about, you know, the case by case stuff that we're talking about here, and make sure that there aren't, there aren't any surprises, and that we, we're able to, um, sort of fully assess whether or not, from past experience, um, and lessons learned, whether or not, you know, it's appropriate in some places and not in others.
It, it's just, so just from a bureaucratic standpoint, it's just really difficult to get a full roads, you'll never get a full road to agree on anything. Right, so it's, it's hard to think about how you would get agreement on how to fix a road to everyone's liking necessarily. I'm not saying that there aren't certain things that we shouldn't do.
Yep.
But it's, it's hard when you go down a path of, okay, before we do this project, we're gonna.
Well, well.
Well, I mean.
I was gonna say, we, we'll decide, we'll just, we'll take comment, you know, and discuss it, but ultimately, it's.
I think your concern is basically, are these millings gonna sit there all summer and blow all over the place, or?
Or is it gonna be picked up?
And they certainly will, if they get picked up, and I don't know.
Should they be swi- swept up?
Yeah, it'd be terrific if they get swept up.
Yeah, you're probably gonna have to sweep it, clean it up.
Yeah, it'd be terrific if it would be swept up. Yeah, I would, uh.
Maybe we should have that discussion, so.
Can can we have maybe Travis watch this last half hour or whatever we discussed?
Yeah.
And then he can get mad.
He doesn't get mad.
I'm just kidding. You know what I mean, but he's.
He's doing the best he can.
I know.
No, and I, you know, I give him credit for trying it, you know, but there there's different types of millings too. Uh, millings off the one road might not be the same as the other. If you're m milling up a road that's crap to begin with.
Yeah.
It's different than milling up a nice section of sixty-eight. You might get fine millings or real coarse millings. So there's a there's a difference.
Okay.
A good idea. Let's have him talk about maybe removing these things, cleaning it up a little bit.
Yeah, we appreciate that big time.
Okay.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks for waiting this whole time. Yeah.
Yeah, I was unpleasant, uh, wait, yeah.
Um, uh, okay, so we're gonna jump back up to item three D, which is the annual town meeting draft warrant review. Which is is really the only important, uh, stuff we have to get done additionally tonight, so, um, take it away.
All right, so this is a compilation of all the warrants that were submitted plus traditional warrants. Um, nothing really anticipated, so if the board is looking for something, then this would be the time to to have me add it. Uh, and of course, the warrant can be opened by the board in special circumstances, but this deadline really allows us to start discussing what it might look like. Uh, we also have three articles that were added today that didn't make this draft that I'll talk about at the end.
Okay.
So the first two, just gonna, just tell me to stop. If I'm just gonna go through it, tell me to stop. So, uh, necessary officers and hearing reports is standard, so is, um, the DOT contract allows us to take chapter ninety money and other monies. And article four is for school grants and funding. Article five, the Holden Hospital account, authorizes us to use that, to accept and use that money annually. Something that's done every year and we're using some of it this year to fund the capital plan. Uh, it's a good thing. Article six, this is, uh, talking about some of our revolving funds. So what is being asked is that the Board of Health Vaccine Account, uh, which is very limiting. Be changed to a Board of Health Fund, which will allow them to, uh, pay for activities related to disease prevention, public health, environmental protection. And those things deemed necessary by the Board of Health. Uh, so they do this now, um, but the vaccine account is limiting and we don't offer that programming anymore. So this would allow, uh, sort of a cleanup in that area. Article seven, we no longer need the plumbing fund or the gas fund because of our regional agreement. So we'll be moving those monies into, moving those monies out into the general fund and eliminating the revolving accounts. Article eight, you're used to a longer sort of thing because of the bylaw we passed last year. All that needs to be reported on the revolving funds is the spending limits. Everything that's highlighted here, I highlighted to show you things that were discussed above, so gas, uh, plumbing and the vaccine account. You might be asking about the wiring account. We're keeping the wiring account to pay for the inspections on the solar project on one forty-seven Williamsville Road. So that will be removed next year if we continue our agreement with Gardner.
The cemetery and planning, they in the fiscal year two thousand twenty spending limit looks like a different, uh, highlight to me. Online, yeah, it's like a green. Is that intentional?
Yes, I'm sorry. So this is recommended by accounting to increase, uh, from five thousand to ten thousand. Cause they're annually just over fi- or around five thousand, so they need an additional bump. Same with the Planning Board Fund.
Okay.
Then we move into the budget articles. Um, article nine is the traditionally called the Budget Article. It includes the, um, approved contract with the firefighters. You gotta fund that first year as we talked about. There's no numbers there, it's just not final yet. Article ten, this is a annual article to fund the senior workoff program. In my opinion, a very good program, something we use very heavily. Article eleven is, um, in in my budget, we've recommended, uh, the cemetery commissions ask for six thousand dollars to fund capital. Uh, this is essentially leaf removal systems that allow them to be more efficient. Article twelve, uh, this was, so just take a quick step back here. This is from, uh, monies that were inappropriately deposited from the hay license, the previous hay license, not the one we just passed. So instead of being deposited into the Hubbardson Preservation Fund, where it's supposed to be by legislation, it was deposited into the Selectman's Miscellaneous Account. We're just moving it back, but because the year ended, we have to use free cash to make that transfer. Certainly talk about that one more if you want me to. Article thirteen, uh, these are negative accounts that need to be made positive, so this would be, uh, moving funds to cover those deficits. More account cleanup. It's kind of a focus you'll see. Article fourteen comes straight from my budget recommendation to you for the capital project. Included is the pavement roller, DPW plow, which is gonna be, um, if approved, an Oshkosh plow. Because of its its power and versatility.
And dump truck.
And dump trucks, sorry.
They're gonna buy an all-wheel drive Oshkosh?
Yes. Used.
We really need another truck?
Yes, that is a recommendation.
An Oshkosh?
Okay.
The, um, eleven thousand is for library roof and skylight repair. That's the, uh, as you're walking into the annex building, the skylight that goes over where the the restrooms are located. Um, handguns for the police department, forty-six thousand for a new police cruiser. This will be a cyclical replacement every two years. Uh, starting this first year and then two for the schools, Hubbardson Center Schools cafeteria equipment. And a water pump booster for the water system and then thirty thousand recommended by me to start a two-year. Replacement of all of our computers.
Uh, okay, let me just stop real quick. So just to be clear, we're we're just, um, discussing this for the first time. And that all of this is still up for discussion.
Yeah, it's introducing. So that really the intent of this is to get feedback from you on who you wanna talk to about these things, what more information you wanna gather.
Sounds good.
Yeah, so the two things that stand out to me are the dump truck and I have a question about new handguns. I mean, they're not used very often, I imagine, so, I mean, people have guns for years and years and years and years in their house. Why why are we replacing handguns?
Uh, uh, my, I would certainly get the experts in here, but my understanding is you wanna replace your handguns every so often. They do fire them for practice and for ranges, just to ensure that they're working.
Yeah, I think they have a recommendation of like ten years or something.
But I I will get you, you know, as much as you want on that.
But then, I mean, that's that's pretty small money, but let's let's talk about. Yeah, let's let's talk about the dump truck.
It is, so the.
That's the, that's the big one.
So the small one for handguns is also because they're using some of their firearm permit money to fund the rest of it.
Okay.
All right, I mean, I don't I don't have much of an issue with that, but B, dump truck.
So we pushed off, we uh, we did this last year too.
Did we?
Yes. So, um.
So last year was, was looking for a two hundred thousand dollar, one of the two hundred thousand dollar brand new dump truck plow combos. Um, and then to replace, forgive me, I don't know the exact year, but another piece of, uh, older truck equipment. Instead of two hundred thousand for one, he split it into two purchases for two hundred thousand over the next two years.
Why an Oshkosh?
Could you, could you ask him to?
Cause I'd like to know because, uh, parts for that are gonna be ten times more expensive than a parts for a regular Mac or or anything else. Um, I may wanna talk to the town of Westminster. I know they purchased one a few years back. And I've talked to a few guys that have worked over there and they are not too happy with that truck. I may be wrong, but I'd like to know his reasoning behind that.
Is that what the guy at the flea, by the flea mattress got?
Yeah, but he's, that's what he does. He he had, he has a place up in, he has to, he's got a stockpile of parts and everything. Those are all off the Air Force bases, but to to order parts from that, from Oshkosh. It's ridiculous.
Okay.
I don't know enough about this.
No.
I'll gladly have our department come in. Uh, article fifty, I'm sorry, anymore on that one.
Yes, um, and I'm and we're not asking the chief to come in, but, and I know some of this was in the 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 five-year capital plan. Could you, could you just ask him to put together, um, um, something that we can see, you know, the the. Uh, specifically, the two years I didn't quite understand. So I know I I get the concept of replacing every two years, cause you get to a certain point with each cruiser, but can we just see that laid out the next time we've got this, so we can see what the future holds as well?
Yep.
And, um, Mike, you were asking about the guns, was he gonna, did you pose a question?
Oh, I'm not worried about that. I'm bigger fish to fry here than that.
I do know he said wear and tear, cause I did see comments about it online and he said just wear and tear of wearing it at all times, weather and things like that. So that was one of the things he said.
When you need it, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think they sell the old one, trade them in.
The pawn shop.
Okay.
Uh, article fifteen, so this will be, um, and it's blank, not intentionally, but this will be. Uh, remaining fund balances from previous capital purchases that we're sure we no longer need, that will be then moved to the general fund. So an example might be, just cause he's sitting right here, uh, the library roof. Um, we've appropriated and put a certain amount into an account that is spent and then there's some leftover. There needs to be some decision on what to do with that, otherwise it just stays in that account. So we'll be cleaning up a lot of.
Uh, that's a good mechanism.
Uh, the next, the next one, article sixteen, is a similar cleanup article. Hopefully I explained this well. So we, we said we were gonna borrow X and then we ended up only borrowing Y. All right, so why would this matter? We wanna rescind those borrows so that it doesn't hurt us in our credit report. So we're just getting rid of old debt that we never used.
Sounds good.
Just a comment on the last one.
Go through him.
Don't take any money back until the roof is done.
I wouldn't. You got accounts that have been sitting there for years. But then what happens is later on, you get accounts that you don't remember what they're for exactly. All right, so the next one is, uh, the CPA section. So the first, article seventeen, is the, uh, taking in of monies from, uh, CPA funds and divvying them out to their appropriate categories. Then there are six, uh, CPA submissions. Just got them today. Which is why you see six placeholders. Uh, they range, I I don't even wanna speak to them until I till I have a chance to give them. But it's it's six, uh, items that the CPA is approved, CPC is approved for your consideration, town meeting consideration. Okay, article twenty-four, so I have this in here as part of the, uh, Green Communities Grant that we've been working on. The town would have to consider adopting the Stretch Energy Code. Uh, there's a presentation planned for May on this, coming from, um, the state. In terms of what that would mean and what that would be like, so this is, um, changing the bylaws in order to adopt this Stretch Energy Code and is a placeholder for that. So there'll be more on that one. Article twenty-five, we talked about this in the fall. This is, um, authorizing the town to impose a local sales tax for purchase or sale of marijuana. In case we got an establishment that sold at retail, we'd want this in place in order to collect three percent.
I thought we were gonna change that to say, um, to the rate maximally allowable by law.
Yes. Okay, article twenty-six, at our last meeting, the board asked me to put a placeholder in for the acceptance of, uh, the layout for Street or Way.
Yep.
That's article twenty-six.
Should there be wording in there, Ryan?
Which one?
Two. On twenty-six, um, if the road is accepted, that it's at the cost of the residents of Street Road.
So definitely language that we can change, uh, after the layout hearing or to, in the next hearing, we can include that up to the date where you approve the the warrant article. So this is really just a placeholder saying.
To hold it.
This is our best guess at what that'll look like.
Okay.
And there'll be more on that in a second. Um. So the the next, the next two articles, twenty-seven and twenty-eight. So I went back and forth, uh, on this, so we pre- we had previous discussions about addressing some of these committees that we have in town. That we haven't seemed to be able to get any volunteers for. So a couple that come to mind are the Housing Authority, uh, which hasn't had anyone run for a couple of years. In addition to, um, the Human Resources Advisory Board, which hasn't been filled. So, these are placeholders to start a discussion about whether or not you'd like to take action on that. In my research on it, it's a, it's a long process, so we definitely wouldn't make it for town meeting. Uh, but if you do want me to look into dissolving this, this is a bio, a charter change, which would require a public hearing. Discussions about changing, uh, different, um, approaches to elected positions, specifically unappointed positions. And then eventually special legislation.
So what, why do it? Do we do it because it looks better when there are less positions vacant?
To to me, it's a cleanup of, if you don't need it, don't, if you don't use it, then why have it? But it it's cer- there's certainly an argument the other way, that if we need it, it's there in case you, in case you want it. But a lot of our policies and procedures refer to a Human Resource Advisory Board that has no one on it.
I actually like, I mean, that, uh, part of your, um, uh. Organization structure, um, has been to be doing things like this, such as consolidating and cleaning up or whatnot. So I'm all for, um, doing it for this too.
And Housing Authority is, no one, no one's running for that and it, we don't have an organization here that is run by a housing authority. So it's more overseeing, say, affordable housing, which has now been taken up by the Planning Board. And, um, consolidated some of those ad hoc affordable housing committees.
I'm sorry, I may have glazed over, but they both say the same thing.
Yeah, and that's a mistake. So it's really placeholder, you could also, the Board of Health has also talked about reducing their number from five to three, right? There should be another charter change.
Sure.
So that they can get a quorum. So I don't think we have time to get these in for town meeting.
Just future.
Just wanted to talk about it a little bit and have a conversation about some direction there, cause it would require some effort in terms of, uh, public hearing, discussions, taking up your time, my time. Something to consider.
Okay.
Uh, article twenty-nine, any, any contract over five years in length needs to be approved, or three years in length needs to be approved by town meeting. So this is very simple language. It might get more legal, but this is approving the hay contract with Lance Lane, which we approved.
Okay.
For the Mount Jefferson Recreation Area. And then, I think this is the last one. So article thirty is a little bit longer, so this would be changing the Hubbardson bylaws. This is recommended by the Agricultural Commission. So they want to include some language, um, from state law into the Right to Farm bylaw. Which allows them, as an agricultural permission, to take on and manage land. And we'll have, having them come in and speak to this specifically, cause it's, it's complicated, but they're allowed to take by bequest. Is that how you say it, bequest?
Maybe.
Uh, and own land and raise enough money so that they can buy land for a- agricultural protection.
Okay.
It's something that some towns do, uh, they want it to be incorporated into the.
Is there a particular part that says that?
So the the part in the highlight is the new, so be a new section called two point six powers of the Agricultural Commission.
Oh, okay.
That would add, um, sections from mass criminal law.
Okay.
And then, uh, these were added today, so just didn't have time to get to it with other things. Uh, the first being, um, a public pa- uh, public petition from the residents. I'm assuming, because everyone on here says Street or Road, but the residents of Street or Road, which is, um, very similar to the article that I have in there.
Okay.
In terms of laying out the road. I think they mentioned that they were gonna put this in and would certainly come and talk to about it. The next one would, and I haven't done my due diligence on this, but authorize special legislation that would allow for the maintenance of a, um. If a private road by by the public us. So this would be two similar articles to the one that we have in, or two that are related to the Street or Road article.
Yep.
Um, so certainly say we should invite them in to talk about those.
Yep.
Or included in the public hearing on the twenty-second. And then the last one was submitted by, um, by Tom Robinson. To amend, there's two of them that he submitted, to amend the Hubbardson bylaw. Um, and this would be to change the language, um, in article seven, Special Permits, Section seven point six. To change the, um, associate member from a designated from. And appointed by a select ward to designated by Planning Board from among the residents. And then the second article, uh, changes that in the general bylaws.
Okay, and and I guess, just based on our discussion earlier, could you draft, uh, an article relative to a debt exclusion for the roads?
Yes.
And I think what we're talking about here is three hundred and fifty thousand for five years.
So what I'd written down is three to, three to five-year plan, three hundred and fifty thousand, and you want Tr- Travis to come up with a recommendation for that?
Well, let's do five years. It was like Jamie said, it gets more, more of the town involved.
And then it's it's gonna have to have language, uh. To to what, to Tom's point before, which is.
Three fifty, right.
Subcontractors.
To be used exclusively for paving.
Exclusive for paving by.
Subcontractors.
By subcontractors. Without the expenditure of town resources.
We can get that.
And and we're not gonna get into like all kinds of, like, just pave these road. I mean, I know there may be milling and grinding, but like, there's not gonna be extensive drainage and stuff, just existing.
Yep.
That the culverts are already in.
Yep.
Just.
But on the other hand. But on the other hand, if there's a big culvert, it's the time.
Yeah, you get, exactly, yeah, which they're doing. Yeah, you get exactly, yeah, which they're doing proactively, you know, they're going around fixing culverts.
This is no issues or something?
Yes.
Nope.
Long meeting, sorry.
Wanna sit next to Pat?
Probably not.
Absolutely. What is on there?
Going here?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, um.
So um. What I would recommend here is, it doesn't have to be tonight, but certainly by email, picking out specific people you wanna come in, so we can schedule them at meetings. And also send it to everyone who submitted, that if they'd like to come talk to you, regardless of whether or not you requested them specifically, that they could come talk to you about through the board's permission.
Uh oh, did you unplug her?
You might have knocked into one of the mics, let me just take a quick look back there. They can still hear you, it's just it sounds.
I probably kicked it. So the uh the idea that we can talk about these articles with uh people who submitted them and get on the same page in terms of what is being requested.
Sounds good, so so far what we've decided is Travis and uh and then um. And no, the chief, we just asked for a.
Explanation.
An outline of the the future thing, he had not to come in.
Yeah. Not, I've anticipated some of this, so I am working on a V.
It's hard to see all of you.
It's hard to uh to a longer-term vehicle plan, somewhat to other plans we have in terms of like here's what we're looking at, so that we're not going year to year saying, why is this here and there, we can come to some type of consensus and and move forward with vehicle replacement.
Okay.
Um is this document already, or will this document get, you know, a watermark, you know, draft, super early edition, but get posted?
Yeah, so my plan is to send it out to all boards and staff, so that they can, you missed this, you missed that, kinda give feedback, and then would like to include, you know, these people should come and speak.
And KP Law reviews these?
They will at the end.
And um with the beyond the boards, would it go to the general public, get posted on on our town website and let anybody read it?
Not the draft.
Not the draft, the final one will be on the twenty-ninth of April.
You don't label it up draft, I mean you put watermarks on it, you can you can make sure everybody knows they're reading a draft.
It it's available, and I'm not opposed to that, my fear is that some of this language is just very elementary on purpose.
Too early.
Start this, yeah, it's too early.
Okay, well, I think that's that's the roads, uh and the uh warrant. Um so I guess, Ryan, you're back up again, if you wanna take us to item six, the town administrator report?
Yes, I can tell the energy level, so I'll move quickly, the um the budget, so I met with the superintendent last week, she assured me and wanted to let you know that um. Projected, so the. For the vast public here. So she understands that the school budget exceeds our ability to pay, and she wanted to give assurances that she knows that and it will change. Details were light. She definitely said she would be willing to come in and and talk to the board, um and this assurance does rely heavily on the state increasing revenue, so further advocacy is gonna be necessary to make sure that our assessment doesn't consume the entirety of the municipal budget. The Finance Committee meeting, Finance Committee is meeting with uh leadership from the QRSD and the School Committee on Thursday, and I will be there for that.
Okay.
I finally have an update for you on the Exhaust Mitigation System, it's been a long road, but we did award that bid to Mur- Murphy Specialty Specialty Inc. I can tell you now that after awarding the bid, we received notification from the vendor that installing the system would require a significant change order, more than twenty-five percent of the total cost. Uh after lengthy discussions, both parties agreed to terminate the contract, so I'm working with uh Chief Hayes now to talk about options in terms of rebidding it.
Okay.
See you.
Uh this next piece, um so our Economic Development Coordinator, Todd Todd Miller, has been working with um our EDC. And talking about our newly-formed EDC, they saw this first, but this is um a soft launch of a new Quabin Country website.
Anybody been to it yet? It's awesome.
What, the website?
It's gonna be awesome, yeah.
And it's done, yeah, it's got some tweaking.
This is tweaking.
You're on there.
Yeah, I know.
He's he's got a soft start, but but it goes right to your website, I was on that today, take a look at all that, so yes.
I got one.
Yeah.
This is one of our long-term goals, was to create uh Quabin Region as a destination for uh recreation, weddings, special events, and of course, our businesses.
He's really on, can I just jump in a little bit too? Maybe you'll have it on there, he's only done really Barry and Hubbardson now.
Yes.
But there's seventy or eighty different links on each of those, but he's getting to the other towns as well, so it's still definitely a work in progress.
So it's more to show the efficacy of the economic development, I can tell you that a lot of the ideas for this and a lot of the emphasis has come from Katie and Whitney, who are um Hubbardson residents. And they they deserve a lot of credit for the name, the platform, um.
I thought you, I thought you, I thought, God, Quabin Country was your your name.
I doubt it, I'm not that creative.
I think it was, he taught, gave you credit, the meeting I was at the other night.
Well, I'm gonna give it back to Katie and.
Okay.
Um because it was their their vision and their idea, so this would become a a platform to sell ourselves, so we've also are working on, you'll see it in the next couple of weeks, some recreation maps, some historical marker maps. Uh stuff that we can do to say, you know, come visit Hubbardson, and it'll land. Going to our website. On a tab called Visit Hubbardson. That's on our website. Someone trying to steal our name. Here, so right now, if you click Visit Hubbardson, it's going to the soft-launched Quabin Country page, but we will be adding some functionality there, uh continuing to develop that idea, hopefully continuing that partnership for another year. So, pretty cool, we're gonna make it a lot better and then have a much more formal launch of the site.
Okay.
Now, we lost nine boards. Just got excited clicking things, give me one second, please.
So did you talk to that guy Todd, and was he like, can I, can we put your?
No, he just.
Just a beard?
It's about Gerard Fens, right?
Yeah, Gerard Fens has got to update his gallery a little bit, I did notice that.
Yeah, I'm not just enough with all that stuff.
Alright, so the.
That's great.
Benchmarking, you've heard me talk a little bit about this, so the Planning Board and the Finance Committee have completed their discussions and presentations for the joint meeting we have planned in May. Um discussion will lay the foundation for a tool that allows us to compare things for you, both to similar and aspirational towns, uh just suggesting that the board bring a a visioning statement for a comparable list. Uh in some way, of course, I'll work with the chair to get that on the agenda some somehow. Building renderings, so as part of our agreement with the architect, we have the ability to create renderings for the municipal building, why I'm asking about this is for public presentations and open houses at town meetings, some of the things that were discussed. Uh just looking to see kind of guidance on what renderings you want us to create, uh so that we're properly executing that vision. Knowing full well that we are pushing this decision uh well past town meeting, uh but wanted to start discussions and get resident feedback.
Can we make a an agenda item on our next meeting for that?
For the renderings, yeah. Master Plan Grant, the MRPC awarded Hubbardson a District Local Technical Assistant Grant, you were part of the approval process for that, uh for our Historic and Natural Resources Master Plan Chapter, so they'll be engaging the Planning Board on that, it's pretty exciting. And they have another round, we expect to get another chapter out of that as well this year, which would be Facilities and Services. It's nice to move the master plan forward and try and get a a new document and vision. The hay license, we awarded the Mount Jefferson Hay License to Lance Lane, who had the contract previously for an award amount of forty-seven dollars per cutting. This is the same family that's been doing it for some time now, the third generation.
Forty-seven dollars per acre per cut.
Per acre per cutting, yes, not for the all cutting, that would be a really bad deal for us. The um contract is ready for signature, it's in your package, I'm looking for the ability to sign it on your behalf, with a vote if you're willing.
Motion to uh sign the, like, give running the authority to sign the hay license.
Contract.
Contract.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And lastly, some employee recognition, I didn't know Joyce was gonna come in here and ruin our night, so it's uh bittersweet for me to also officially announce that Jane Areta has given her retirement notice. Jane was hired by the Library Board of Trustees on July first, two thousand, and is one of the longest-serving Hubbardson employees, it's like months between her and Joyce. We're happy for Jane and her retirement, but uh we know she can't be replaced, so there is an interim plan in place, the Library Board of Trustees is in charge of that hire, giving them whatever support they require from me, um but but they do control that by charter. And then upcoming topics, we have the benchmarking we discussed, you get a quarter-three financial report from me in the next coming weeks. Um considering our human resource policy updates, those are gonna come flying at you once the budget's done, and then we have annual town meeting as you know.
Alright.
How much time did Joyce give us?
Uh June, June thirty.
Thirty, I think.
June thirty.
Okay, thanks Ryan. We've got some minutes to approve from February fourth, who uh.
Jamie was the only one out there.
Jamie was the only one there, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February fourth, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes. Jamie?
Was I there?
No.
No.
Quick committee update here, QEMP, I actually had both of these meetings last week, QEMP Task Force. Um was it was a a a good meeting, and it it had to do with Todd Miller uh presenting the Quabin Country stuff and and all that, and sort of an update of what the QEMP was up to, we hadn't met in several months. Um but it was also, um we got a presentation given to us by a school committee member from North Brookfield, who she's also a teacher at Dover Sherborne um School District. And she had done this presentation recently, is the second time she did it, Ann Ann Goby actually came for it, um and then a bunch of members of the QEMP and the and the school administration were present for the presentation. And it had to do with the actual real discussions that are going on with the change to the um uh formula, you know how it always sounded like? So what they've they've sort of done, and there's a couple of active bills, hands on one or two of them, I think, maybe both, is they're actually this considering this thing called the rurality factor. So instead of actually going in and trying to change this ridiculously complicated formula, which you and I went to that thing a few years ago on, it's actually a rurality factor based on where you are to bump you up, so it's not like reinventing the wheel, it's just adding another line. To be able to adjust it that way, which I thought was pretty, you know, good idea, so I don't know how much of this you know, uh you you were there, that's right, the previous one, or something.
I just know about the.
Rurality factor.
What you're talking about.
Okay, anyway, so it was just a good meeting, a very informative meeting, um good sort of back and forth, whatnot, and uh you know, just considers our our strong relationship with um with uh um you know, MRPC, CMRPC, and we did find out, QEMP. Um they do uh annual dinner and awards, and the QEMP was awarded, will be awarded, the collaboration award uh for just getting the five towns together and doing what we've done, so we're gonna go to that dinner and get a certificate or something. So it was good, um and then the Town Center Committee, we also met last week, a couple of things just of note, one, we sort of went over the plan for Route sixty-eight north, for you know, other stuff we've talked about in here relative to what the Town Center. Uh schedule is gonna be and where the design stood, and um but another piece of it is we had um Jessie Tora come in, um she was, you know, the head of the community build and all the stuff we did with the playground a few years ago. Uh that is rekindled, she's not running it, um but it looks as though it might fall under the TCC in collaboration with the parks for replacing the playground up at the field. So same sort of deal, she had all that info and people she talked to, just the whole process, she sort of reintroduced it back to a a full committee, who we haven't even gotten any further than that yet, but still, you know, it's it's, that's a that's a that's an old playground, you know, it could use a.
Heavily used.
It's heavily used, and it could use a um could use a facelift or a a replacement, so.
Yeah, once soccer season kicks in, it's really gonna be packed up.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, so it's probably so far out of compliance with compliance. So okay, okay, so that's the committees, um I.
One more update there, Mr. Chairman, so we did go to the MPO meeting, um the last MPO meeting, which decides the um regional tip or or state transportation improvement plan. And found that uh the Town Center Committee and two of the three recommendations, the Town Center project and two of the three recommendations is in FY twenty-three, and then one recommendation is FY twenty-four. So um Travis goes to these meetings regularly to advocate on our behalf, I go to as many as I can, but have been going to these recent ones to uh show the the organization that we we want this project to be funded as soon as possible, and we're ready, as as soon as two thousand twenty-one. So they continue to hear that from us, they continue to hear that from the residents, um but it looks like we'll be able to put a coming soon banner no later than twenty twenty-three.
No, we can, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, it's it's a fully, full-on approved project, it just has to get uh fitted to the right pocket, and if we are fully ready, and somebody falls out of bed and two thousand twenty-one comes and we're ready to go, then then fantastic, so um.
Two months we'll be able to say for sure that we're on the list, so uh it's a significant improvement.
Yeah, it is. Uh okay, matter's not reasonably anticipated by the chair, I don't have anything, you guys got any?
No.
Uh public press, anything? No, uh okay.
Motion to adjourn. Just, I'm sorry, just to be clear on the executive session, so this was scheduled in case um people saw and and witnessed a a public discussion with discipline of an employee. Uh this was scheduled in case that to protect that employee in the town, in case that employee wanted to not, no longer be an open session, cause that was Officer Aiman's request.
Yep.
Um it's not needed anymore, so there there's no deletion except that it was a placeholder just in case.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn out there?
Second that.
Discussion, on favor?
Yes.
Yes, motion adjourn, adjourn at nine sixteen, alright.